Hi there. Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you so much for joining us today. I'm Senator Michelle Hinchey, and I serve as Chair of the Senate Agriculture and Food Committee. I'm so excited to be co-chairing this important hearing today in partnership with Senator Prasad, who chairs the Senate Committee on Social Services, and Senator Ramos, who chairs the Senate Committee on Labor. This pandemic has put into stark focus the way our food system works and how fragile they can be. If we've seen one silver lining, it has been the State Nourished New York Program that has started a bridge to divide the food produced in New York and access to it for all New Yorkers. But it has not done nearly enough to address the full food access issues here in our state. This hearing today is to begin to look at the broader picture of both food insecurity and how that interacts with diversity or the lack thereof across our food system and producers. Some statistics: Black Indigenous and people of color farmers are extremely underrepresented in farm ownership and have faced many obstacles due to discriminatory practices and policies. Less than 1% of farms are run by Black farmers, and less than 3.5% of the over 33,000 farms that we have in New York are managed by farmers of color. And according to data from the United States Department of Agriculture, Black farmers in America have lost almost 12 million acres of farmland since the 1950s. We have a great group of individuals testifying, so we can begin to tackle these issues: individuals working on increasing access and opportunities for BIPOC farmers, groups on the front lines of fighting food insecurity across New York State, experts from Cornell on land access, and those individuals working their way into farming currently despite the numerous barriers. We can't address food insecurity without looking at our food systems as a whole, and today we're working hard to start doing that. We need more farmers to help increase our food systems, and we need diverse farmers to help produce diverse and culturally relevant foods so that individuals across our state have access to farm-fresh foods regardless of where they live across our state. New York, as we know, is an ag state, and we need to work to make sure that our agriculture sector is as diverse as the people it's feeding. I'm honored to host this hearing with my colleagues so that we can work to solve this problem together. Thank you very much for being here. Senator Prasad?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Senator Roxanne Prasad, and I proudly represent the 19th Senatorial District in Brooklyn and also serve, as Senator Hinchey has said, as the Social Services Committee Chair. Thank you, Senator Hinchey, for convening this timely and critical hearing. It is extremely, extremely critical at this moment in time. The pandemic has brought New York's crisis level of food insecurity to the front and center. Just last Saturday, I hosted food distribution across my district, and we've been doing that during the entire pandemic, and it seems as though food insecurity has been growing despite us trying as much as possible to share a food. You know, all of our districts have experienced food insecurity. I do not think that there's any district across the state of New York that can say that they have been untouched. However, we've long needed to take a much closer and deliberate look at economic opportunities for marginalized New Yorkers, including the Black Indigenous and people of color in the agriculture and food production sectors. Do we have BIOPIC? Are you choosing to go into agriculture or agribusinesses? You know, how do we attract more of them to become part of the sector? Further, how do we cultivate BIPOC leadership in this sector? The borough of Brooklyn is not known as for its sprawling fields and pastures, but there are many, many community gardens of varying sizes across Brooklyn and particularly across Senate District 19. There is food production in Brooklyn, and to a much lesser extent, there is food being harvested here in Brooklyn. Over the past years, I've taken agricultural tours with my colleagues to upstate New Yorkers where I see the issues experienced by our farmers, and us as legislators need to work proactively so that we can address the issues that they are experiencing so that we do not continue to lose farmers. And while we're working on that, we have to continue to attract BIPOC farmers to the industry. You know, again, I'd like to really thank Senator Hinchey for being at the forefront of this issue. You know, it's wonderful that we continue to connect our young people with the training opportunities farms, you know, in Senator Hinchey's district. I'd love for us to continue to collaborate on that. You know, Cornell and all of these organizations, we've been having conversations with them. So again, Senator Hinchey, I thank you for convening us today, and I look forward to hearing the testimony of all of the panelists. So again, thank you very much.
Great. And with that, we will introduce our first panel. So this is Anu Rangarhan, I'm so sorry if I did that wrong, from Cornell, who runs the Cornell Small Farms Program, as well as Mario Savo from Cornell, and Sylvia Rios Reyes, who is a graduate of the program. And I will turn it all over to the three of you.
Great. Thank you. I want to thank you, Senators Hinchey, Ramos, and Prasad, and all of your supporting staff and all of the other distinguished guests here today for this opportunity to testify. I'm speaking on behalf of Cornell University and the Cornell Small Farms Program, which I direct. I'd like to open my statement with an acknowledgement that Cornell is located on the traditional homelands of the Goyacano people, the Cuban Nation. And we acknowledge the painful history of the Goyacano dispossession and honor their ongoing connection of these people to the lands and waters around us. So the Cornell Small Farms Program envisions a future where New York State agriculture is made up of diverse and vibrant urban and rural farms. Our program is deeply committed to diversifying whose farming in New York. But thank you again for this first-time state support for our Equitable Farm Futures Initiative. This new funding will allow us to expand our efforts to grow the number of diverse farmers in New York, including those who identify as farmers of color, women, LGBTQ+, and those from other underrepresented groups. There's an amazing lineup of thoughtful leaders on your agenda today who will share more deeply about their own efforts to support diverse farmers. And we, as a program, stand in solidarity with their vision and leadership. I will focus on our efforts to increase the number of Latinx farmers in New York. So as you mentioned earlier, Senator Hinchey, the census of agriculture in New York has shown us that there's less than 2% of the 57,000-plus farmers in New York that identify as farmers of color. A mere 1% of our producers identify as Latinx. That's 606 in total. Yet more than 80,000 Latinx farm employees work in New York State as a central backbone of our farm businesses. They're highly experienced, have managed large farms, have all sorts of skills, and have most planned to spend a lifetime in agriculture. Yet few have transitioned to farm ownership. So to start a farm, we tend to focus on access to several core assets: capital, land, training, and supportive networks. But what's missing from this list is the critical need for supportive surrounding community. Almost every diverse farmer that I've spoken to has shared this story: "I want to farm, but I do not feel safe to farm." So when considering the myriad of challenges, starting a farm includes: Imagine being a person whose first language is not English, whose ethnicity and agricultural role has been characterized as worker, not owner. Our masterclass program is designed to meet the express training needs of Latinx beginning farmers and farm employees. We use an ESL framework to build English language confidence while strengthening financial and business management skills. And I'm so pleased that Sylvia will be here to share more about their own experiences with starting a farm here in New York. And so while we're really thrilled to be expanding this effort this year, it's only one example of how we must all pivot our efforts to meet the unique needs of diverse farmers in the state. If we are truly committed to an agriculture that upholds diversity as a core value, a systemic change is needed on how we think about agricultural development. And the tools and the levers of the state could advance this work so much by increasing the commitment of our entire agricultural community to this value. A few ideas that I'll share now. For example, how might we connect right-to-farm and safe-to-farm at every level and across many different allies and institutions? This is an issue that transcends agriculture. What might it look like for Niessdam, who has a budget in 2020 of over $175 billion, to be able to dedicate at least 10% of that towards diversity initiatives and collaborations? And as a correlate, how might all of our agricultural agencies and the funding directed toward agricultural issues, regardless of scale or commodity, include a lens of increasing diversity in New York agriculture? And finally, what might it look like for New York State to commit funding to support land acquisition by these underrepresented farmers? I'll offer some more ideas for legislative changes in my written testimony. But what I think is most important is that most of these organizations and individuals that are today working so diligently to increase the diversity of agriculture are doing so on slim budgets with mostly volunteer labor. And this is just not sustainable. The work of systemic change is going to require us all leaning into the future we want, and so I'm so grateful for your thinking and commitment to this issue, and I offer our full support to the cause. So thank you for this opportunity to just share my thoughts and comments about this important issue.
Great. Sylvia, would you all like to do your testimony?
Yeah. Hi. Hi. I'm new in this, so I'm a little nervous. Yeah, last year, we attended a masterclass, and this is very, very good. I will recommend to a lot of migrant people who are here, and they would like to know about it. And I really enjoyed the class. I learned a lot. It was my first time to attend, and I work at the farm. We own a small farm, and we know, but we learn more in there because in the class. And I'm sorry for my English. It's not so good. I'm just learning, and I'm trying to do my best. We, like I say, we start with a new farm, a small farm. We have an apple orchard. And when we was in that class, in the masterclass, we learned a lot about how to, how do you say, manage? To manage? Yeah, they're like, you know, we have to be in charge of a lot of people working and how to talk to them. We have to be, you know, nice to the people. And there was Nicole, who she helped me a lot too, and Mario. And I think it's a very good, very good opportunity for who wants to attend to that class. It's very nice, very good. I learned a lot, and I would like to go again if that's possible. This is very good, so. They teach me about how, how do you say?
Organizar.
To organize the people to work, how can be, how can I, how do you say? Organizar la, las, el grupo de gente, like.
How to manage the workers and how to stay on top of your books.
Really, really, okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm just nervous and.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
So she was saying that the masterclass helped her better manage the people, how to be more efficient with the workers and, you know, get the most for what they're paying. She also said that they helped her be very, how to maintain her books in order how to know how to be more organized, the tools she needs.
Yeah, so basically, they teach me that, something that I didn't know, like, with Miguel, Miguel, I forgot his last name, but he was there too. And he was helping me about financials, so there was something good for me that I didn't know. Yeah, so I think it's time up.
Yeah. Time's up.
Okay.
I'll jump in, because I have my hand raised. That was great. Thank you so much. It's wonderful to hear your firsthand experience, and I know these are kind of intimidating forums, so I really appreciate you being here and sharing your story. How did you first get connected with Cornell and with the class?
Oh, yeah. Mario, that's the way how we know Mario for a long time, and we've been working together for a while. And me and my husband, we own a company too, who do grafting. And that's the way how we met Mario, in one of those shops. It was like farms, and there's where we met Mario, and then we started like a relation. And he invited us to participate with him in a lot of projects that he have, and we have some projects, and he helped us a lot. That's how we know Cornell.
That's great. And how, for Mario and Anu, how are you finding other participants in the class?
Mario, do you want to go ahead and share that?
Yeah, okay, so Michelle, let me give you, I don't know if I can give you how much time I have, but so I am originally from Chile, and I was a very lucky guy to be hired to work with the apple industry here in New York. So I mainly work with the commercial fruit growers, okay, since I was hired by Cornell. But by starting in 2011, I started to see the important amount of Spanish key employees that we have in the Lake County Fruit Region, and several of them are at the middle manager position. So in 2017, I was able to partner with Anu, who is located on campus. I work in extension, Cornell Cobra Extension, in the region. And we were able to start this project, the masterclass. So we have been able to recruit already two classes of masterclass people like Sylvia and Sergio, and Sergio Jr., who are almost ready to become entrepreneurs, but they need more support. So what masterclass is providing is this curriculum in an ESL format that is allowing all this huge amount of Spanish employees that we have in our industry to be able to excel to the next level in entrepreneurship. So not all of them own or charge, some of them are renting orchards in a kind of agreement with the grower, commercial fruit grower. Because many of our fruit growers in the Lake County Fruit Region, they don't have the next generation. They don't have their own kids interested to continue producing 400 or 500 acres. It's a huge investment. It's a long history of fruit production here in the Lake County Fruit Region. And it's a great opportunity for the Hispanic-speaking employees. It's kind of very similar to what happened in Washington State and in California. If you go there, now you can find the owners of orchards. It's the same thing, I think, is going to happen here in Western New York.
Yeah, we see this opportunity to really expand this program into other sectors and other industries now. And so we're very much excited about what that will look like.
So this is just one commodity. This is the apple commodity. But if you go to the Finger Lakes, you have the grape industry, and it's the same thing happening. If you go to Batavia, you have vegetable farm, cabbage. If you see dairy, it's a lot more difficult for a Hispanic employee to become owner of a dairy farm because the investment is huge. But there are many options, at least in the apple business today, and we have many successful, like Sylvia and Sergio are very, very successful, okay? Sylvia being very honest, but they have high-density plantings. They are very successful in their grafting business. They have been doing great, okay? But I would like to have 15, 20, 25 more rosarios across the entire Western New York. But they need the training. They need the same kind of training that we have been providing to the commercial fruit growers through their traditional Cornell Cobra programming.
So one thing I just want to add very briefly that's really powerful is that we don't, we need more families and farmers like Sylvia and Sergio to be mentors as well to other farms. So in being able to mentor people from their own community, they share all of that other life experience that will increase success and community connection. And I keep on referring back to safe-to-farm, like creating those community connections and environment that make people feel comfortable and supported in doing these ventures.
Senator Prasad?
Yeah, quickly, what services do you offer after the masterclass? And how long are they connected with you? When they need assistance, are you there for them? And then another question I have, when you talked about them being afraid in the communities that they're in, can you touch on that? What makes them afraid? Other than, you know, you talked about language barrier and all that. What are they afraid of in those communities?
All right, as far as support, one of our efforts in our masterclass is to connect the participants to other service providers, like Mario. But then we have an individual who speaks Spanish that does financial planning with them directly. And so we're building out a collection of service providers. We're building out a slate of individuals committed to supporting their success. And so we are in it for the long haul with them. And it's sort of similar to the way that our program continues to support new farmers, is that we continuously invest and create courses and content to support people as their businesses grow and mature. In terms of addressing the issue of safe-to-farm, I think this is one that any person of color might experience in living in a rural place. And it's not a unique experience. And so that is the issue of how does it feel to actually be welcomed, to be in a place in which your efforts are really honored and cherished and that you are supported in all of the myriad ways that communities support each other? This is not a simple question to address, but it's one I think we have to keep in mind as we continue to try to create these pathways going forward.
Thank you. I think it's a conversation we must continue to have. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to next, our next speaker, Kate McKenzie, who comes from the New York City Mayor's Office of Food Policy.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, Chairs Hinchey and Prasad, and members of the Standing Committees of Agriculture, Labor, and Social Services. I also really appreciate my colleagues and their contributions to the testimony just before me. I am Kate McKenzie, Director of the New York City Mayor's Office of Food Policy. Thank you for convening this hearing and for the opportunity to testify. The Mayor's Office of Food Policy is committed to advancing progressive food policy reform and to addressing the persistent inequities in our food system. My office was created through executive order in 2008 and has worked since its inception to elevate and advance the city's food policy agenda, increasing food security, promoting access to and consumption of healthy foods, and supporting economic opportunity and environmental sustainability in the food system. In February, the city released its first-ever 10-year food policy plan, Food Forward NYC, a comprehensive framework for creating a more racially and economically equitable, sustainable, and healthy food system for all New Yorkers. Food Forward emphasizes the importance of equity and choice, enabling a food system where everyone should be able to access the food they want, wherever they may want it. To enable this choice, we need to support both our food workers and our food businesses. To strengthen the sustainability and resiliency of our food system, we need to rethink our food infrastructure and deepen our connections with the region. The plan is organized around five overarching goals. The first is around increasing the ways for access to healthy, affordable, and culturally appropriate food. The second is ensuring that our food economy drives economic opportunities and provides good jobs. The third is that our supply chains that feed New York City are modern, efficient, and resilient. The fourth ensures that our food is produced, distributed, and disposed of sustainably. And finally, we want to ensure that we have the systems and knowledge to implement this 10-year food policy plan. It is long-term and wide-reaching. Furthermore, it recognizes that some of our most promising strategies fall outside of the city's purview. To truly have a transformative impact on the food system, the city cannot go this alone. Food businesses, large and small, community-based organizations and advocates, philanthropies and academic institutions, regional partners, the state and federal government, all have a critical role to play. The city has a, the region, excuse me, has a large and growing role in this food system. Since the '70s, we've had a citywide network of farmers' markets, and we've strengthened connections between the region's farms and urban consumers. Today, more than 100 farmers' markets, farm stands, and community-supported agriculture points, dot the five boroughs, our restaurants and grocery distributors, provide a critical market for many of the region's farmers. The region is also where much of the processing and distribution activity that the city relies on occurs. In line with broader efforts by the city to strengthen regional partnerships, this plan both acknowledges the region's central role in food policy planning and seeks to deepen coordination with regional governments, businesses, and other partners. We are committed to increasing our procurement of local, regional food. We purchased less from the region than we could because of the difficulty in selling to city government and businesses. And we would love to work with you to find legislative solutions that would help small, New York-based farms access the city's procurement pipeline. We know that there is enormous potential to connect farmers across the state with communities across the city. Moreover, the food sector is often a high-risk, low-margin sector. And if we truly want to see small farmers and food workers thrive, we must find long-term solutions to support them. I look forward to working with you on developing these long-term solutions to connect farmers to our underserved communities. Needless to say, I'm very proud and energized by this work, and invite you to read the full plan, which is available on our site, and we'll certainly share. And of course, through the pandemic, our Foods R and Office of Food Policy teams demonstrated through initiatives with city agencies, elected officials, community-based organizations, and partners what working together to create a better food system can look like. I look forward to working closely with you in these initiatives in the years to come and particularly on our procurement efforts. Thank you, and I look forward to continuing these conversations.
Thank you. Senator Prasad?
Thank you. Also, thank you, Ms. McKenzie. You know, you talked about what the city has been trying to do during this pandemic and your willingness to partner and bring more food into New York City. Can I just, I just want to touch on, and so you can take it back, the struggles of the milk farmers, the dairy farmers. You know, why is it that we are not allowing the dairy farmers to send whole milk as an option? You know, we need to look at the food plan that the city is working on so that when you're talking about ensuring that everyone has access to foods that they want, we have to be willing to allow them to have options to the milk that they so choose to have. So, you know, it will go a long way in helping our dairy farmers if we allow them to send whole milk to the city, if we continue to purchase whole milk and allow it to be offered in our schools, in our hospitals, et cetera. I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you so much for your comment and for your consideration, absolutely, of the farmers and your points around whole milk. Obviously, the city has a long legacy around nutrition and food standards, and I can certainly be able to chat with my colleagues at the Health Department on that. I know that certainly there is a connection between our agricultural industry and the health of our children, and I look forward to continuing that conversation with you.
Thank you.
Senator Hinchey?
And quickly, I will ask you, talk about the difficulty of selling to the city. Can you elaborate a little bit on what those difficulties are?
Sure. And I I also really appreciate the remark my colleague made. You have an extraordinary panel of 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 individuals who you'll be hearing from. And my colleague, Ribka Garatu, from the Community Food Advocates Group will speak to this, I'm sure. We are, as a city, you know, have to follow our state procurement laws. And we understand that General Municipal Law one oh three poses some challenge when it comes to aligning food values into ensuring that we're getting the best for our value. And that value is not just low cost, but value is about health, value is about environment, value is about workers and and certainly sustainability and environment as well. So, you know, I think that when there's just some areas to explore to make sure that when we're thinking about to my to our, you know, the question just before here, when we're talking about feeding children in the most helpful way, we want to make sure that that helpful product is is truly helpful and not just the lowest item in in the procurement line.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I'm gonna introduce our next panel now. Thank you, Kate. Um, our next panel includes four speakers. And they are Tamara Dawson from the Campaign Against Hunger, Jerome Nathaniel from City Harvest, Sarah Salem from Duchess Outreach, and Jamela Anderson from Free Food Fridge Albany. And I'll just ask that all speakers, you'll notice a timer on here if you can watch that as you are delivering your opening remarks. And we'll just do it in the order that I just listed, so Tamara first.
Hi, first I would like to thank Senator Prasad and all the senators on the call as well as the Agriculture and Labor and Social Service Committee for allowing the Campaign Against Hunger to be able to speak on today. As mentioned, I am the Director of Program here at the Campaign Against Hunger. The Campaign Against Hunger has been playing an active role in urban farming since two thousand and nine. We started with just our Executive Director looking out in the backyard of our office space. And we saw that we had land that was just filled with overgrown weeds, rodents and things along those lines. And being from the Caribbean, we said, hey, this space is here, why don't we just turn it into some form of farming? And we started our first garden. In doing that, we saw the importance of meeting the needs of our clients, having a food pantry. We saw that twenty-three percent of our clients suffer from diabetes, high blood pressure. And at the time, it was very difficult to find leafy greens for our clients to meet the needs. We could find your root vegetables. And so we decided that we were going to take this space and convert it into a small urban garden. We were told by so many people that this was impossible, the fact of where we were located, that we had to take the soil out and then bring new soil in and that it would not be feasible. But because we had a heart, a passion for the community, and we wanted to help individuals who were suffering from these health disparities, we pressed along and was finally able to get what is called a C grant that allowed us to convert that space into an urban farm. We then took youths from families along the line and started a Green Team Farm. It's that same initiative that we continue to carry on till this day. We continue, that one small garden has grown to several different gardens equal in over an acre, acre and a quarter of space of land. We took our green teens who were kids who did not understand at the time when we first started, didn't understand here was the tomato on our plate. They knew that the tomato was on their plate, but didn't know where it came from. Didn't understand the background between it. And so as green teens, we educated them, we taught them entrepreneurship skills. We helped them with college development. We helped give them just information needed to sustain them as individuals while learning about healthy eating. Wow, not the time. Okay. So what we did with that is since then, we've blossomed, we've seen that our green team has begun to not only work in the community, gone to college, have worked even in our organization. Our farm manager is currently was one of our green teams, our counting, one of our counting individuals as part of our green teams. We've taken our fresh vegetable that we've grown and we meet the needs of individuals through our fresh vibes market. Going to those, to senior centers, nature build colleges and things along those lines just to get into individuals' hands, fresh produce that they need. Thank you very much for this opportunity and the availability to just speak on behalf of the Campaign Against Hunger and what we do and the importance of having urban farm in our community. Senator Prasad?
We're gonna do all the panelists first, so I'm gonna have Jerome speak next.
So I'll go ahead and get started. My name is Jerome Nathaniel. I'm the Director of Policy and Government Relation at City Harvest, which is New York City's oldest and largest operating food organization. We have the pleasure of working with over four hundred different pantries and soup kitchens across the five boroughs, including incredible partners like the Campaign Against Hunger and many others across the five boroughs. Firstly, I want to thank Chairperson Hinchey, Ramos, Prasad and members of the Standing Committees for holding this very important intersectional hearing here today, especially on the backdrop of the height of the COVID nineteen pandemic. In my written testimony, you will see four very specific recommendations on how the state can build food justice into their legislative agenda. But before I go through those recommendations, I do think it's important to provide context on food insecurity, COVID nineteen and City Harvest work. So when we talk about food insecurity during COVID nineteen, I'm very intentional to say that this isn't new need, it's exposed need. Because even during times of record low unemployment last March, that recent, it was four percent. But we still had a situation where City Harvest and New York City as a whole had over two point five million New Yorkers below the self-sufficiency standard, meaning they didn't have enough income to afford food with groceries or rent, medical expenses, childcare or transportation. And City Harvest was also on pace to distribute sixty-four million pounds of food, more than half being of fresh produce from farmers across the nation to New Yorkers in need. However, after March and after over two million New Yorkers filed initial unemployment claims, we're now fishing, facing a reality where there's a fifty-five percent increase in food insecurity across all five boroughs, a sixty-four percent increase for children. And when we look specifically at more diverse communities, including Queens, where food insecurity rates are projected to increase by seventy percent when, over the course of the twenty twenty pandemic. So as we shift gears and think about how City Harvest is prepared to feed the line or feed those in need, we had to increase the amount of food we distribute from sixty-four million to one hundred forty-four million pounds over the course of twenty twenty, which is a number I never thought we, I would have saw since I started at City Harvest. But as we're feeding the line, it's also important to think of policies that shorten the line and that are centered in food justice. And our four recommendations, which are in greater detail in my testimony, so I won't get into the specifics, include supporting community-led projects that build food resiliency by supporting legislation such as Senator Comrie's Food Security, Empowerment and Economic Development Program. I know I saw it earlier, I'm not sure if he's with us, but that's an important way to pay those with lived experience to develop their own solutions to food access. The others to make Norris, New York a permanent program and to make sure it's done through a racial equity lens. So instead of food banks like City Harvest sort of figuring out on a touch and go basis whether or not the program is going to be extended or funded, it's important that it's made permanent through something like the Surplus Act and that BIPOC farmers are really prioritized for enrolling into the program. Our other recommendation, and this is on the cusp of what Kate McKenzie spoke about, and that's investing in local government strategies that partner with stakeholders to build food equity. And we identified the Food For NYC Plan as incredible opportunity that really will require state support to make some of the larger investments come into fruition. And then finally, ensuring that New York State maximizes available options to strengthen SNAP, even though it's a federal program, there's opportunities like the Restaurant Meal Program, which I know Senator Prasad has introduced a number of times, that will allow elderly, differently-able than unhoused New Yorkers to use their benefits on high and prepared meals. So I thank you for this time, and you'll see greater details on how those things can make an impact in my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah?
Sure. Thank you so much. And thank you, Chair Hinchey, Chair Prasad and Chair Ramos for coordinating this hearing and for your leadership in advancing this cause. My name is Sarah Salem. I use they/them pronouns. I am the Director of Development for Duchess Outreach. We are a Duchess County Food Access Organization. I'm the co-founder of the Hudson Valley Food System Coalition, and I'm the Chair of the City of Poughkeepsie Common Council. And I'm giving my comments today from the City of Poughkeepsie, which is located on the unceded territory of Boilinapi Nation. Jerome so eloquently presented food security statistics. However, I would like to go over those once more and the impact of the coronavirus on our constituents and our community members in Duchess County. At the beginning of the COVID nineteen pandemic, the incidence of food insecurity spiked to due to sudden unemployment and financial hardship. And with that came an increase in food prices and a difficulty relying on community support due to social distancing and quarantine requirements. The pandemic also led to an increase in negative health outcomes, either directly or indirectly related to the coronavirus. While the pandemic has thrown some folks into severe food and economic hardship for the very first time, it has also increased hardship among those who were already experiencing food insecurity prior to the pandemic. Meaning, these longstanding disparities have not only persisted but worsened, and they have further demonstrated their linkages to poverty, systemic racism and limited or inconsistent access to healthy and affordable foods. Here in Duchess County, the incidence of food insecurity has more than doubled through the pandemic. My organization, Duchess Outreach, is located in the City of Poughkeepsie, which is a beautiful and a diverse community that was barely just recovering from the economic, financial crisis of two thousand and eight, and now facing yet another tumble into crisis. However, uniquely positioned to bounce back, that is if local legislators start to consider long-term solutions, solutions that will allow us to not only recover, but to start to create the conditions toward a more equitable future with policies that give us the tools, give us the tools to dismantle the systemic inequities of the past. We at Duchess Outreach, we're happy to offer an immediate, short-term solution and to act as crisis intervention to fill the gaps. However, we are ready for a transformation, for a more equitable food access solution that maintains dignity and restores justice. Initiatives like Nurish New York are a brilliant start. While farmers were experiencing financial hardship, supply chains in ruin due to the shutdown, this state, New York State, stepped up and dedicated budget dollars back to our economy, recovering agricultural loss, preventing food waste and getting nutritious farmed foods into the hands of the folks who needed it most. Now, we need to direct a percentage of those funds to BIPOC farmers and to impacted communities. Solutions moving forward must address the racial wealth gap and concentration of poverty. We need to increase access to affordable and healthy foods. We have to expand access to SNAP and other federal benefit assistance dollars. We need to improve individual social and economic resources and invest in communities so that they can build their own capacity and their own local governments can build capacity as well as nonprofit organizations and be a partner in the long-term sustainable solutions so that everybody gets a seat at the table that create jobs across skill sets and sectors in food enterprise, co-ops, markets, distribution, farming, the list goes on, all while contributing to the vibrancy of our local food system. Fund farmers, especially BIPOC farmers, fund communities, especially historically oppressed and marginalized populations, and incentivize the purchase of local foods throughout communities. Help to fund food policy councils so that folks can proudly make their own food choices. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Jamela?
Thank you. I mean, that was really well said, Sarah. So thank you for touching on all that and thank you for bringing me into this conversation. So I run the Free Food Fridge Albany Program, which I started as a a response to the COVID nineteen, taking away a lot of food access for folks in marginalized communities. And just the way that Albany specifically is set up has offered a lot of, you know, systemic oppression. So the redlining that's happened has kept grocery stores and other even bodegas out of the neighborhoods that, of the people that specifically need them. So we are finding that there is a massive food apartheid happening right here in our little city. And it's not even just in the marginalized communities, but it's actually in a lot of the communities here. So even the ones that are more affluent. And there is maybe three grocery stores. So this was something in response, the same way that you've seen in other big cities like Oakland and all throughout New York City, having literally just refrigerators outside and putting them in places where people don't have the access, don't have the capabilities to walk to the store or because of the COVID nineteen hitting us so hard. Maybe, you know, parents or grandparents are without work and they're watching more children or they just have more responsibility within their family unit. And so this is a way for folks to be able to access something without having to actually go outside of their neighborhoods. And the response that I've had has been really huge, but more to the detriment of the community that we are going without so bad that it takes this project to sort of be a wake-up call. Something that I have experienced myself and I feel like this project alone is sort of like really on like the ground floor of what's happening. So as someone who has faced food insecurity and works with people who are also facing food insecurity, the the need for nutrient-dense foods was really not there either. So, you know, the food pantries offer a lot of food and they offer access, you know, a lot of the days during the week, but very limited hours. It's not anonymous. We've seen a lot of people having to turn to food pantries that didn't quite know how to access them before. And then that includes the the language barriers and the the fridge project itself was a way to remain completely anonymous for people to access food twenty-four seven and to not have to search for things that will be nutrient-dense. So specifically working with farmers in the surrounding areas and grocery stores and restaurants. So this is more of a reparations project. So there's less of a a need and a push on the actual people within the community and rather the people who can help support the community, whether it be through the food or through monetary donations. And I've completely funded this project basically on my own through crowdfunding. And it's only growing. We're trying to mobilize it. And I I really think that, you know, it shouldn't be on us, the individual, to push helping food insecurity in this way. It should be more on the the government and the legislature. I want this to again be a wake-up call for for folks to like put food in the neighborhoods, to put grocery stores in the neighborhoods. I shouldn't be have to having to do this on my own. And I have, and the response has been great, but we need to do more and bigger. And we need to do it now.
Thank you. Senator Birello will now turn to questions from any of the senators on.
Yes, thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank everyone, all those that are that are coming here today to speak. Thank you so much. Actually, specifically Jerome, I just wanted to say that your reputation precedes you. My friend, Catalina Cruz, spoke highly of you and your efforts, particularly in the pandemic and, you know, really mobilized the Nurish New York program. And I have a question, it's slightly off topic, just about the idea of, and this is true for most of the food banks, of, you know, the availability of cold storage. So we're really going to get fresh perishable foods. Can you speak a little bit about that and the challenges that might be faced? I mean, I saw that, how much that helped the Hornada, once they were able to get, you know, frozen storage there and how much they were able to expand their their program in Queens.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. And I sensed that a lot of the folks speaking after me that will have a lot to say about that. There's definitely a great shortage, at least in New York City, in cold storage. And that's actually a piece from the Food For NYC Plan that's really important to recognize too, that it's looking into more borough-based food hubs so that it can answer some of that cold storage shortage. And particular for smaller programs that don't have access. If they're not in City Harvest Network, then unfortunately, they may not be able to provide fresh produce, which we know is very important, especially for families that might be facing medical, medical vulnerabilities or want the agency to be able to cook and prepare the food they want as opposed to having it packaged. So there's, there's definitely a shortage, and I I know that you'll probably hear specifics on what that looks like in terms of numbers from our allies at Community Food Advocates as well.
Great, thank you. And again, you know, getting fresh produce, especially down from areas further upstate or out on Long Island, obviously cold storage is going to be a big part of that. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Senator Prasad, did you have a question? I saw your hand.
No, no, I was gonna say that about Tika had the same issue with cold storage, and they had a unique situation. But thanks, Jerome. It's always great to see you, and thanks for everything that you do.
Great. Thank you all. I'm gonna introduce our next speaker then, Karen Washington from Rise and Root Farm.
Hi, everybody. My name is Karen Washington. A pleasure for being here. So I've been a farming activist and grown food for over 30 years. My roots started as a community gardener in the Bronx in 1988. I saw firsthand inequities of an industrialized food system dumping processed junk food into low-income communities, and have seen the consequences of diet-related diseases, hunger and poverty plaguing my community. Since then, I've become an activist and irritant, an advocate for change to happen in the food system. Here we are, folks, decades later, only to witness things have not gotten better but gotten worse. In 2014, I started a farm upstate, Chester, New York, with my friends called Rise and Root Farm. We have five acres of land in the black dirt region. I, along with my partners, were thrilled to be growing food to help feed underserved communities as well as making a living. However, customers and communities of color would always ask, "Where are the farmers who look like me?" I too would ask the same question. So after doing some research, a group of us found out, according to the last census, out of 57,000 farmers in New York State, only 139 are black. Sit with that. Also, three of us at my farm are LGBTQ farmers, and there's no doubt on this group. I was told that each state was supposed to have an LGBTQ cooperative extension agent. If so, where is that person? How can that person be reached? And I have been very private about my own sexual orientation, but felt the need to speak up and come out today after being invited to speak to a group of young aspiring LGBTQ farmers who were inspired by my journey as a farmer and sought me out as a role model. The LGBTQ farmers also need to be seen and heard. Injustice affects all of us. We cannot move on without addressing the racial, sexual, and wealth inequities and disparities we see in our current agricultural system. This is why I support Black Farmers United, New York State, as it stands by the nine solutions for racial equity in New York State. So I question you lawmakers. When are you going to address these issues, number one, and what are you going to do about it? At 67 years of age, I cannot afford a wait. The black farmer issue is urgent. By not addressing the lack of black farmers in New York State, 20 years from now, there'll be no black farmers, and we'll have a food system dominated by one race of people, white people. The lack of black farmers affects and hurts all farmers. Right now, the average white farmer makes close to $14,000 a year. The average black farmer, minus $910 a year. When it comes to funding, we don't need loans, we need grants. When it comes to programs, asking farmers like us to participate, supplying food to underserved communities, we can't compete because our farms are already feeding our own communities. The overall wealth in America has white families' wealth an average $141,000 a year, whereas black families' wealth is $11,000 a year. The wealth gap in this country has historically been fueled by races, politics, and policies in the past. The time for change is now. This pandemic has only exacerbated the racial divide we see in this country. How can we heal as a country? How can we do better? It's up to all of us. As farmers, we take pride in diversifying our crops. Why can't we take the same pride to go into what our farmers should look like? Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Borello, was your hand up from the previous? Sorry. All right. Thank you. I, oh, Senator Prasad.
No, I just want to quickly thanks Ms. Washington. I've heard of Ms. Washington's work, and I just wanted to thank her for her advocacy.
Yeah, so 57,000 farmers, 139 are black. I'd like to hear what solution we're gonna do with that, you know, that's major, folks.
I think that's why Senator Hinchi has convened us today, so we can hear from you and others, and so that we can come up with solutions, because it's a problem. It's a situation that we must address. Thank you.
That's exactly right. We're having this forum because we recognize that this is a critical issue and a problem that has not been solved. And to your point, it's something that we need to make dramatic inroads with now. So we are holding this forum to hear from people on the ground so that we can then go back and have conversations amongst ourselves and decide legislatively what we can do to really impact, make a change in this space. So thank you for being here and for raising your voice on this issue. We agree.
Thank you. Our next panelist is, or our next speaker is Dr. Roger Batista from the Cornell College of Human Ecology Department of Nutritional Sciences.
Good afternoon, Senator Prasad and colleagues. Thank you so much for the opportunity to participate today. I, you know, I came here with the intention of speaking around similar topics that other folks have articulated earlier. So I will try to not repeat myself with things you've already heard, but I would still want to make, you know, arguments that, for similar causes. I just want to start by, you know, putting food insecurity in the perspective of it being a global issue. We have about 820 million people being affected by food insecurity. We know that if we want to think locally, New York State is not doing any better than the rest of the nation. We just heard our colleague Jerome speaking about New Yorkers in New York City. It's on its own being 2.5 billion New Yorkers, and it's much worse in other rural regions of the state, with about two more million people. I also want to emphasize that, you know, these numbers, and Jerome brought this up as well as I was listening in, but food insecurity has never gone away. COVID-19 just exacerbated the issues we have been dealing with. And I think that, what I think, what I find most appalling about what COVID-19 has done to us as a population, I think all of us have been impacted by it in one way or another. But what it has demonstrated is that there's a prolonged history of health inequities among US minoritized populations. Data from the CDC recently confirmed that COVID-19 is now the third-leading cause of death, just behind heart disease and cancer, as of 2020. And what's worse is that these rates are disproportionately affecting or are disproportionately high years among black, American Indian, Alaska natives, and Hispanic Latino populations. As the populations with greatest risks, these minorities populations are also navigating a difficult climate or circumstances to access foods. And that's with the worsened food insecurity, you know, are things that they have to navigate. Overall, we know that one in five black and Hispanic household with children are food insecure or are food insufficient. And I think that one of the, one of the lenses through which I want to talk about in terms of how much worse things have been with COVID-19 around the theme of food insecurity is, you know, some of the reasons for that. We know that school closures affected how children access school meals or services worth $30 a week that most people couldn't help but navigate or access. Loss of jobs, or all the fact that a lot of POCs are actually essential workers. So navigating all these different issues have made minorities populations in this country, especially in the state of New York, have brought a lot of different hiccups or barriers. And I think it's time to think about what ways we can really make sustainable changes so that the food assistance or food safety that we have in place for populations who struggle with security are actually helping them have long-term alleviation of food security. Thank you.
Senator Hinchi?
I would just wanted to comment on what you brought up in the beginning, is you're right, food insecurity is across the state. You know, in districts like ours in the 46 and more rural communities, we still see food drives with cars lined up down the street, often running out of food before we can finish those. And I know for some of the food banks that we worked with early and continue to stay in touch with and continue to work with, you know, their needs skyrocketed at the beginning and have held pretty steady in the time from serving, you know, 300 families or 300 cars a week to upwards of over 700 a week. And so that need is still severe, and even we struggle with connecting sometimes to farm fresh food and making sure that we have different varied foods to serve communities across our district. So thank you for making that point as well.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Our next panel is Melanie Allen from Black Farmer Fund and Alexis Mena from Black Farmers United, University, NYC. I'll turn it over to the two of you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Melanie Allen, and I'm the Program Director at Black Farmer Fund. I grew up on Long Island, and I currently reside in Brooklyn. And I am here today representing Black Farmer Fund and Black Farmers United, New York State. Black Farmer Fund is a community investment fund that invests in black farmers and food businesses in New York. This year, we have raised close to $1 million of integrated capital that we will be deploying over the next several months to black farmers and food businesses across the state. These farmers and businesses will uplift the values of Black Farmer Fund's investment process around building economic justice, community wealth building, and managing environmental and ecological impact. We are here today because we have been disappointed in the lack of funding that is targeted specifically for black farmers and how the generalization of pooling together veterans, women, black, and indigenous farmers within the disadvantaged farmer category has been ineffective. This work is personal for me. Farming is a part of my culture and identity. My grandparents grew up in Jamaica where their parents were farmers, and well into their 90s, my grandparents continued to grow their own food. My history, my story, is similar to many of my colleagues testifying today, where being in right relationship with the land and food sovereignty is our right and our legacy. We are tired of being excluded from accessing resources, accessing land, being left out of decision-making spaces, and the historical discriminatory practices that have kept our communities from building generational wealth. And this is the inspiration behind the community governance model of Black Farmer Fund, to center the lived experiences of black farmers into the decision-making process, to challenge the extractive nature of traditional funding vehicles, and to ensure that loans and grants offered to farmers set them up for success rather than create more hardship. We belong to a community of farmers through Black Farmers United, New York State, of over 30 farmers, and the stories of farmers that have been able to take advantage of funding through any New York State budgets are few and far between. We are asking that you all create a pool for over $10 million specifically for black farmers to be distributed through Black Farmer Fund. This pool from the state has the ability to support at least 56 black startup farms, established farms, food distributors, and value-added companies. And we are asking this of you because in New York State's $42 billion agriculture and food industry, the disparities between black farmers and white farmers are best summarized by the startling data that Karen Washington already shared. The black farmers in New York State have a total net cash income of negative $906, while for white farmers, it's over $42,000. Changing these statistics mean New York State needs to become more specific and targeted about efforts to increase diversity in our food system through funding opportunities. Directing state funds to Black Farmer Fund to redistribute to our community is essential. It is truly the only way for black farmers to be able to build sustainability and wealth for our communities. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, Alexis.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right. Good afternoon. Thank you to Melanie, all of the panelists who came before me. Thank you all for convening this meeting today, and thank you for this time. My name is Alexis Mena, and today I'm here representing Black Farmers United. I'm one of the members located in the Republic of Brooklyn. I am Afro-Taino. I'm the child of Dominican immigrants. However, I'm calling from Canarsie, Lanape Land, aka Brooklyn. I'm a two-spirited person who was born beyond gender. I'm the daughter of Taino medicine women. May their spirits be with us now. I'm the son of African farmworkers and migrants whose spirits I call forward now. I'm the co-founder of university, 10,000-square-foot food hub and incubator space. Ms. Prasad was one of the first to walk through our doors. Thank you for always being one of our supporters, Ms. Prasad. And I'm the lead farmer there. I've been a community organizer for over 10 years, a community chef for over eight years, and I've been a farmer since my grandfather taught me which crops to grow to sustain my family. I'm someone who's accumulated a lot of privilege, property, and access, thanks to my parents who fought and worked hard to accomplish tremendous things while in this country. This was not easy. They have shared countless stories about how they have been denied the rights to resources, land, and access to a social safety net. Black Farmers United has seen this happen across many black communities. So our solution is pathways for black guest workers, migrant workers, undocumented farmworkers to become business-owning producers. We need to make a path for black guest workers and migrant workers to become business owners, point blank. A thriving wage, bringing back respect and integrity, is at the, needs to be at the core of that. A farmer is as important as a doctor, as your attorney, or as an engineer. Do you believe me? Try growing avocado or some cacao and come back to me. This is a highly specialized field, and the people deserve access to the human resources, just like you would if you worked at McDonald's. We accept the same people are connected to land access opportunities and infrastructure financing. Like Ms. Washington said, we don't need loans, we need grants. We need a tool to get climate workers connected, supported, and uplifted, and they are already a major resource in our communities. I implore you to be more explicit when you write ownership into equity in the policies that you're going to be looking at as elected officials. You all know simple shifts in language can be the difference between a policy being obligatory rather than suggestive. And this is the future in our eyes. So I ask you, how do we leverage the upcoming infrastructure bill that we are expecting in order to support these efforts? Investment in food sovereignty through workforce development, land access, and financing is what BFU wants with a growing economy and a food system across the board. Which brings me to my second solution. We demand $10 million for black farmers to be appropriated to the Black Farmer Fund. A nonprofit investment vehicle which collectively led by folks like Melanie and myself, who have the pleasure of being part of the pilot community. We understand that this pandemic has put New York State in a difficult position. However, we believe that the resources do exist, especially that the inclusion in the social equity component in the recent MRTA Act, thanks to the Majority Leader People Stokes and the Assembly for working on. However, we defer to you as to how best to fund that. However, money is only the gas in our world, and the vehicle is land. And that is what gets us where we want to go. So for our third solution, we propose 500 acres are put in the trust of the Northeast Farmers of Color Land Trust, which provides land access to indigenous and black farmers and earthkeepers. The reason we ask for Nefoc Land Trust to be trusted with this is because we feel as though their leadership represents us, and we believe that they operate on a level of intention and thoughtfulness that others don't. For example, they have three levels of operation. They provide land for farmers and earthkeepers. However, they first call an indigenous consultation protocol and environmental conservation from both a native perspective and what is asked for by the state. This indigenous knowledge has historically been ignored or absorbed into academic institutions and branded as things such as permaculture, herbal medicine, and aquaculture. These are all examples of indigenous technologies that we have modernized to support agricultural needs. However, we believe it is time that this knowledge is respected on its own platform. Our fourth solution is to create a certificate program in Cornell with black farmers with this knowledge to teach BIPOC farmers on their farms with salaries and scholarships provided by that university. We would like to see funding allocated for SUNY to bring in an endowed chair. or endowed chairs that allows the schools to bring in someone of our choice who we work in partnership with them with. As I mentioned in my introduction, I am calling today from Brooklyn, New York, where I was born and raised. It is also where I have organized the creation of five community gardens, one of them right across the street. One of the school, four school gardens that I created is right across the street from Besti Restoration, as Tamika was speaking earlier, also helped create two skate parks. And now with University, this is my first urban farm. And through this effort, I have learned that urban farms are not seen as the same as rural farms in the eyes, in the eyes of the USDA or the FDA. When you add the New York City's Department of Buildings and Department of Health into the mix, things get further complicated. With that, I'd like to introduce the solution number five, funds for black-led urban farms. We must create pathways and priorities for urban farmers to access empty lots and the capacity to retrofit underutilized warehouses or rooftops. I, we are currently operating at ten thousand square feet with the possibility to expand another forty thousand square feet to include some of the refrigeration, processing, packaging space that was mentioned today, working with organizations like Brooklyn Packers, Collective Fair, amongst others, to be able to pull this plan off, but we can't do it without you. So we demand we find a way to permanently, permanently protect urban farms with conservation easements as practiced in rural areas. Support black farmers in building an urban-to-rural pipeline for growers, or as I like to call it, the upstate and downstate mycelium. My organization is working on the Greens and Brownsville of New York State. It is a community-led smart city initiative centered around food production, environmental justice, and organic waste. I'm excited to share the genius of, of my community members. This project will be dedicated to implementing modern community solutions to food insecurity, diverting organic waste from landfill, and implementing a variety of green tech solutions to tracking environmental data amongst other data points. University Campus will be the first piece of permanent infrastructure and first piece dedicated to the research and development for the technology and solutions that residents of Brownsville and East New York need and want to see themselves.
I'm sorry.
Which brings me to the sixth solution.
I'm sorry, Alexis, I know that you would, this has also been submitted, written as well, which, which all the senators had advanced. So I just wanted to, to, in the interest in time, just to, to see if you could wrap it up in, in just in a few minutes.
Not a problem at all. I'll go through it as quickly as I can. So the seventh solution is to provide full scholarships to all black students pursuing SUNY agricultural degrees. We believe, our eighth solution is that we believe by improving data collection to identify who, and who are the black farmers in the state, who want to be black farmers in the state in order to recruit and increase those numbers to track the support assistance and the need of those farmers. And we would like you to allocate funds to Black Farmers United to oversee this process. And last, last but not least, we'd like our solution nine is to combine and refine these solutions to create a comprehensive plan, because this is only a proposal. So we want to work with you to create a plan to increase the number of black farmers across New York State who are thriving through a proven model of solutions and solid metrics. And I thank you again for my time today.
Thank you, Senator Hinchey.
I'll, I'll be quick because I know that we've had conversations, I think, with all of you. My office has had a lot of conversations with you, but just quickly, what was the name of the land trust that you had mentioned in the beginning of your remarks? And I also agree with you, Alexis, I think in general agriculture has been really left behind, and people don't, don't value it in the way that many should, and this is what we're trying to change partially through this forum as well. And so what was the name of the land trust?
Northeast Farmers of Color.
Great.
Land trust.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to introduce our, oh, sorry, Senator May, did you have a question?
No, I did, just quickly, because Alexis and Melanie, thank you for those presentations. I just came from an event here in Syracuse with the president of SUNY Morrisville, which is one of the agricultural schools in the SUNY system, and the director of the SUNY Educational Opportunity Center. And the two of them work together really closely. And so the EOC is, is free, and it is designed for training people specifically either to, to go further with higher education or to enter the workforce. And it seems like collaborations like that between, they haven't had a specifically agricultural focus of the collaboration between the two institutions, but it seems like something like the EOCs could be a pipeline for helping to start people out without the barriers, you know, because it is, it is free, that you can, you can start there and then figure out what you want to do farther on. I just didn't know if there are collaborations like that elsewhere in the state that you're aware of or if you have worked and ever with Educational Opportunity Center on, on these issues.
My organization does a lot of educational opportunities. However, I'd like to center the fact that it's more important that we look at how these decisions are being made and who's at the table. And, and, and really, we need to look at, like we were saying before, the financing behind these, these, these projects. Because unfortunately, a lot of the black farms are, in some ways, forced to be nonprofits because, in order to find financing, right? Because often enough, institutionally, credit and other financing means have been extractive or racist, and unfortunately have failed us in a lot of ways. So in reality, we need to find non-extractive forms of building this, and that's what I think Black Farmers United, I'm sorry, Black Farmers Fund represents. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I was more focused on the, the education side of it rather than the, you know, starting the farms, which is a whole other.
I apologize. I was managing a hydroponic farm inside of a middle school, and I think that right now we're working on retrofitted shipping containers that are going to, that we hope to turn into learning labs at each one of these, you know, DOE locations. So I'd love to talk to you more about that. I just think that often enough, you know, how these things are implemented in programming funds. Often times, there's funds for the infrastructure, but not funds for programming, and that's something we need to look at.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you. And with that, I'll introduce our next speaker, Alexander Wright of Black Legacy Farms.
Hello, everyone. First, I hurt my back yesterday, so I have to kind of do this prostrate. So just bear with me. Black Legacy Farms is a twenty-two acre farm that I purchased in November of last year. Purchased it because I run a food cooperative and noticed that there were a lot of us, you know, we spent over a half a million dollars in produce, and none of that money went to a lot of people who look like us. So I wanted to remove some of the hurdles. So on this twenty-two acre farm, we do it differently. We lease out plots, about ten thousand square feet. If we lease out all of the plots, that's ninety-five farmers. With the information Ms. Washington gave you earlier, you understand what a huge impact putting ninety-five black farmers on land would do right now, today, in New York State. The farm is located in Franklinville, New York, upstate New York, about an hour outside of Buffalo. What we really want is we want to put together equipment, transportation, and training for the would-be farmers. What makes it unique and very, very interesting is that I, so I run a place called African Heritage Food Co-op, and our aim with that initiative is to put groceries in low-income areas. We have a store in Niagara Falls, and we're putting a store up on the east side of Buffalo, New York as well. So the people who farm on Black Legacy Farms, they already have a, they already have a source. We're going to buy whatever they grow, as long as it's fruits and vegetables, you know. But, and I did that because what are some of the barriers? The barriers have always been, one, owning the land. It's been very difficult for folks to own, own land. Two, getting, who are you going to, who are you going to sell it to once you grow it? How do you make money for you and your family? So that's what this initiative is, Black Legacy Farms. I'll put the website in the chat. To give people the opportunity to get back to land right now. And, and our state, and our country needs to invest in that. Other people have already said it. We need to spend the money to do that, and we need to support folks who are doing it. And I want to, I want to push you and I want to challenge you to not take the easy route and say, okay, you know someone who's progressive and kind of forward, and you're going to give them the opportunity to manage these monies, somebody's cousin, friend, blah, blah, blah. Because what happens is, we have these forums, and we talk good, and everybody's strong, and blah, blah, blah. But at the end of the day, money may go to one person, or the red tape is so extensive that people can't benefit from it. I'll give you an example. If you want to start a grocery store, right, there are a lot of hurdles and things that you have to do. You go through all those hurdles, and then you say you have a grocery, and you want to accept food stamps. Do you know in the food stamps, if you want to accept them, they ask you if you've ever been committed, have you ever committed a crime or been convicted, right? Now, we, we remove the box in all these different places, but not on that application. So if a person is from the inner city and maybe made a mistake trying to change their life, trying to do something great for their city, they can't accept EBT. And if you want to put the grocery store right in the middle of the neighborhood that needs the most, you're probably going to need to accept EBT. So it's like, yeah, go ahead and start something, but there are things that are prohibited and make it very difficult for us to do that and function. And it's the same thing in farming. And what I'm saying right now, Black Legacy Farms, if New York State got behind that, if New York State got behind the Black Farmers Fund, if New, and, and I think that we are small enough, BIPOC farmers, we're, we're small enough to where New York State can do a massive investment in everything, right? Don't make us choose, because you don't make other farmers choose. You'll help that farmer, that farmer, and that farmer, and those farmers down there. But when it comes to farmers that look like us, you'll, you'll tokenize one of us or two of us, and then say, hey, look at all this great stuff. That's nonsense. Had to come out of my pocket and buy twenty-two acres because my country wouldn't. Had to come out of my pocket and buy that for my people because my state wouldn't, right? We're going to do this. We're going to be successful. We're going to push. We're going to make it happen with or without you. But I would rather have you in my corner. And if people are going to talk about all this, making the change, we're being different, right? Then let's do that. Let's do that. Let's not just have these forums and say we've had these forums. I'm looking to see my time. I don't want to go over my time. Oh, time's up. All right. I'll stop here and answer any questions.
Thank you. Senator Borello?
Thank you. First of all, thanks for your testimony. You mentioned Franklinville, New York, which is actually in my district, in Cataragus County. So I guess I'll be just curious to learn more about what the initiative there is and certainly how we can help. I think it's anything that can help, you know, we have so many farmers that are aging out, you know, that, that don't have a succession plan. And if there's a way to put A and B together, I think that can be part of the solution. So curious to learn more about that.
Definitely. I can reach out to your office, or, you know, I don't want to take up too many folks' time here, but yeah, we would definitely love to work in like a training system. People out in Cataragus County so far have been very, very gracious, and we have people who are donating like beekeeping stuff to us and folks that are willing to come out. So like, the movement's going in the right direction. If we had some support on other levels, we could really make this. Look, ninety-five farmers right now, that almost doubles the total black farmers you have in the entire state.
Yeah. Well, happy to help. Yes, please reach out to my office, and then sure, between myself and Senator Hinchey and others, we can certainly see we can do the help.
Great.
Thank you. Senator Hinchey?
And I would just add, yeah, we, we agree, and that's why we're, we're having this forum, not just to, to have it, but to really try to make some change and to figure out the connections and the movements that we can do to, to not just help you, but to help this entire sector. How did you find the, the ninety-five that you have on the farm is amazing. Congratulations, and thank you for doing that. Thank you for purchasing it. How did you either get connected or bring people into the farm? How did you find those beginning farmers?
Yeah, we, we just publicized it. We said, hey, this is what we're doing, and who wants to be a part of it? We lease out the property, we lease it out, and I think that's important because you have to put skin in the game to take you seriously. I'm not a huge fan of free. I'm a huge fan of getting, removing obstacles and giving people opportunity. Because what this should be about, if not, I don't want to have a government subsidized farm for the next two hundred years. What I want is assistance and help now to get people up and running and get moving, and also a nice supply chain for folks, you know. So not only are we growing, but people who are supporting us are saying, hey, are you buying from Black Legacy Farms? Are you buying from Ms. Washington? Are you buying from Soul Fire Farms? Are you buying from these BIPOC farmers? Because it's not just about, we have to look at it long-term, not just about supporting now, but making sure that we can be self-sufficient, because that's what it's about. It's not about having somebody give me a spoon for the next hundred years.
I also want to add, I hope you feel better.
Thank you.
Senator Prasad?
Thank you. I was going to say, I simply hope you feel better. I can see you're in pain. Quick question. Have you recruited farm, urban farmers to come to lease land?
Yeah, we have five, five leases signed right now. We have another ten coming in in the next week or so. And we're, we're moving forward. We'll get to ninety-five. But one of the things that we're going to be support for is transportation. It's an hour away from Buffalo and other inner cities. So we want to make sure that we have transportation that brings folks, that can help folks get out there so we can start growing and working with whoever's already out there as well.
Okay, thank you. Just so you know, that as you were speaking, I was texting my staff and just let everybody know we're all working. Because as I'm texting my staff, he says, oh, Leah is also texting me the same questions. So we are going to continue based on some of the things that you just said. So thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I'm going to introduce our next panel. So we have Donnette Baptist from Fort Baptist Farm, Lisa French from Field and Fork Network, and David Just from Cornell University. And we'll start in that order. So Donnette, you, you can go first.
Thank you, and good afternoon, senators and colleagues. I support Black Farmers United and their nine proposed solutions, and I'd like to speak today on behalf of our farm, Fort Baptist Farm, where we advocate for food justice and food sovereignty. I currently live on former Cayuga land under a Finger Lakes Land Trust in the state of New York. I am the proud granddaughter of Jamaicans who were migrant workers here in the United States. So some of the solutions that I'm going to present on speak to migrant workers and their own inequities that they face. The challenges and inequalities faced by black farmers today in terms of land and resources access for agriculture is ingrained in the racialized history of the United States. The ability to address this issue by making funding and resources available to black farmers is of paramount importance to sustaining the livelihood of these enterprises now and for future generations. According to the 2012 census, the black farmer represented forty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine of the three million farmers in the USA. This number is one point four nine percent of all farms in the US. The percentage represented is so miniscule as the food and agriculture system is inextricably interlinked to the racialized history of the USA, and that is inextricably linked to all or social, political, and economic endeavors. Here are some of the problems I face as a black farmer. Not enough persons of color are farming. This means BIPOC cooperatives are few to nonexistent. Markets for BIPOC produce may be difficult to access and are dependent on their geographical locations. Loans and other resources may be challenging to access. Loans and other resources may be challenging to access. Instead of taking loans personally and incurring insurmountable debts, I experience a challenge of having to work two additional professions in order to ensure that our small staff here at our farm is paid a livable wage for their work during the summer. We have persons on our roster who face food insecurities and housing and health insecurities due to systemic racism. Our efforts to help even one person at no additional cost to them means loss of revenue to us in markets that are dominated by larger entities. These are usually white-run and have ease of access to the fundamentals of any economy, land, labor, capital and entrepreneurship. In order to institute systemic change in support of black farmers and workers statewide or organization Black Farmers United New York has proposed nine solutions for racial inequity in New York agriculture. Due to the support of Fort Baptist Farm, 4BFU, I would like to see adequate housing on farms that support seasonal guest migrant workers. I would like to see a path for migration for undocumented workers who work here in the United States. I would like to see opportunities for them to have land access if they so desire. I would like to see land access of prime arable land for black farmers. I would like to see land access for first-time BIPOC farmers. I would like to see current black farmers in spaces where we can educate and pass our knowledge to the next generation. I would like to see permanent protection of black farms that are conservation easements such as my own. I would like to see better access to markets, loans, educational opportunities, grants and spaces that we as black farmers never had access to due to systemic racism and the intergenerational difficulties posed by this scourge. Thank you for your time. I am Donette Baptist for Fort Baptist Farm.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Lisa French.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on behalf of Field and Fork Network and our nutrition incentive program Double Up Food Bucks. My name is Lisa French and I am the co-founder and executive director of Field and Fork Network, a statewide nonprofit organization dedicated to building a thriving regional food system that serves all New Yorkers. Double Up Food Bucks is a program that matches SNAP benefits dollar for dollar on local fresh fruits and vegetables, helping increase healthy food access for New Yorkers. For the last eight years, my organization has administered the Double Up Food Bucks program across varying and diverse communities that face food insecurity. Our experience in implementing Double Up Food Bucks has shown that matching SNAP benefits with incentives for locally and regionally grown fruits and vegetables is a cost-effective way to simultaneously reduce hunger, improve dietary health and stimulate local food economies in a way that can create new job opportunities. Through this one intervention, we can meet immediate caloric needs and build a healthy population. Through our robust program evaluation, we know that we have served over 24,000 SNAP users with the program. We've seen over $1.8 million spent on healthy food. We've, excuse me, over 200-plus New York State farmers have directly benefited from the Double Up program with increased revenue and a new customer base. Of those 200-plus New York State farmers, we know 6% of them identify as people of color. And 96% of Double Up customers surveyed said they increased the amount of produce they consume because of the program. Healthy food incentive programs like Double Up Food Bucks do far more than just reduce hunger and improve nutrition. These programs also support economic development and jobs. They provide increased purchasing power for low-income families who can stretch their food budgets further. These food dollars drive additional sales at grocery stores and farmers markets. And those sales in turn circulate in the local economy, providing a boost to workers, businesses, farmers and communities all throughout the supply chain. A newly released research report, "The Economic Contributions of Healthy Food Incentives", highlights the findings of a team of economists at Colorado State University that supports the notion that programs such as Double Up Food Bucks can provide significant economic benefits if they were expanded widely across New York State. This pioneering study shows that broad expansions of healthy food incentives will provide powerful returns on that investment for families, grocers and farmers, as well as more broadly among the state economy where such benefits are expanded. Today, the Double Up Food Bucks New York program operates in 23 counties with plans to double that number by 2024. We have expanded the program footprint to include farmers markets, farm stands, mobile markets, small retail and grocery stores, all in communities that have SNAP recipients. We employ innovative technology solutions that are safe, secure and convenient for the Double Up shopper. The positive and immediate impact of nutrition incentives is an opportunity to help all New Yorkers thrive. The standardized model of Double Up Food Bucks and the ability to successfully implement the program and diverse food at retail outlets makes it a unique program that has the power to enhance the value of the SNAP program and build healthier food environments and a more viable and responsive food system. Currently, there are more than 13 states that support Double Up Food Bucks programs with effective legislation, recognizing the significant impact Double Up Food Bucks has in their communities. The time is now for New York State to show support for Double Up Food Bucks New York with strong legislation to ensure its existence into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And David?
Thank you very much. And thank, thank you for inviting me today. At, at the onset of the pandemic, temporary and permanent business closures drove a dramatic and unprecedented spike in unemployment, which in turn flooded our food assistance system with, with folks who were newly food insecure and seeking help. In a recent survey we conducted of food banks, all banks recorded an increase in demand for food assistance, but the degree of increase was geographically concentrated and was not particularly easy to predict a priori where it would have taken place. Often this was driven by supplier-demand barriers in local industries. But those particular barriers themselves may not have been local. They may have been due to problems that were occurring in other parts of the country even. Average distribution for food by weight increased by about 25% within this survey, but that hides a dramatic amount of heterogeneity. About 20% of food banks increased distribution by more than 50% or even up to 100%, while up to half increased distributions only modestly. Those with steep increases reported dramatically longer lines, difficulty procuring enough food to meet the need and difficulty providing enough labor to even distribute the food if they had it. Some of this difficulty was exacerbated by a falloff in food donations from grocers who are facing stockouts, an inability to accept restaurant donations due to food safety guidelines that forbid repackaging. Government relief efforts also were, were only able to respond as quickly as they received reliable information about geographic concentration of these growing needs. And, and so we're sort of behind in the response curve. Future food security emergencies could be addressed more rapidly, more effectively and more efficiently if we were able to implement a, a comprehensive system to track food insecurity indicators at a local level and in real time. And there are potentially several different approaches one could take to doing such a thing. Simplest approaches would use internet search data to try and monitor where people are looking for food insecurity. Of course, that's going to miss a lot of, of what is actually going on on the ground where people who are already connected with food insecurity and food assistance networks wouldn't necessarily search for it. And the geographic information we get is not particularly precise. Proactive strategy could look to businesses to report on intent to lay off workers or to cut hours and use this information to mobilize resources before they were needed, track two-on-one calls and other sorts of contacts with the government in a way to not only fuel response, but to, to use that data predictively to anticipate where we might run into problems. All the way up to, you know, collaborating with food banks or even creating apps similar to the COVID Alert New York app that, that tries to predict where we're having problems with, with the virus right now. Having this real-time data at a narrow geographic level would assist in targeting food aid and support, but could also identify when a crisis might be of sufficient weight to consider suspending some regulations locally or take other measures that would, that would be important in addressing a particular crisis. In addition, in addition, we could also identify localities where there are likely to be households that are facing food insecurity, but either don't know how or are averse to seeking help. So we can make the food available for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do any senators have questions? Not, um, thank you. I'm going to go to our next speaker, Jeanette Miller from the Eclectic Farmstead.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for being here today. My name's Jeanette Miller and I started a first generational farm in New Fane, New York, in Niagara County. I'm here today to talk about, and our first speaker kind of brought it up, which is right to farm and then safe to farm. So I started off my journey in life, just, I was a troubled teenager and I ended up homeless. And I went through some turmoil there. I went back to school. I got my master's degree with a cumulative 4.0. Realized that, you know, some of the troubles I had were due to labeling as a teenager. And I moved on with an educational career. So I became a teacher in, you know, several different districts. Ended up moving out of the city and into the suburbs of Kemmore where I had a front yard garden and I, you know, grew vegetables and stuff like that. I taught from my front yard with the kids that, you know, I taught in school and I received tickets from my town, well, my village of Kemmore for having a front yard garden for noxious vegetation. So I thought, you know, wow, even when I proved it was vegetables that they, they didn't like let up on that. So that was where kind of my journey started on farming. I decided to move out of the suburbs and buy 70 acres of land in a rural area of Niagara County near where the apple orchards are. And I was, I do permaculture style farming, so it's not monocrop farming. We, you know, raised meat chickens and chicken tractors and we started everything from the ground up. So here we are. We bought this land. It's in an ag district and it's on 70 acres. And I started farming out here. I also joined the school district out here and became a substitute teacher and a sub in a few different districts. When I started my adventure farming, I thought the toughest part of my life was being a homeless teenager. And being a homeless teenager, I never ended up in court as much as I ended up in, in court trying to start a farm. And this was because my town didn't recognize me as a new farmer. They didn't, they, they said to me, my town supervisor said to me, so you're the woman who thinks she's in a farm in my town? And along with other things. There was a lot of trouble with the neighbors not wanting to look at the way I was farming chicken tractors or having other animals in the field. They were used to monocrop, you know, like corn and wheat and stuff like this. So this kind of started my journey. I was already an, uh, already did advocacy work for children, but this kind of started my farm advocacy. So from there, I reached out to Farm Bureau and I joined Farm Bureau so that I could have a farm group on, on my side, but I didn't really know where to go from there. And there's only so much a group like that can do. So I'm currently the vice president of my county Farm Bureau and I sit on a couple of different committees now with Farm Bureau. I've been with them a while. And I do advocacy in my town. I spent five years in court fighting with my town for my right to farm here. And this was during the time when in the news I was reading about, this is one of the reasons I decided to do it. We need more young farmers. We need more women farmers. We need more small farmers and niche farmers. So I had this adversity in my town and this is what the, you know, the Senate, the Assembly, the news was promoting was, we're looking for more of these types of farmers. So the reason why I joined today is because my concern is now we're looking to find more diversity in farming. And with advocacy I've worked done over the last seven years, there's been, out of the 12 towns and three cities in, in Niagara County, six of the towns I've had to advocate for people, either young farmers, minority farmers, small farmers, niche farmers and elderly farmers, because towns, small towns pretty much think they can do whatever they want and they do. And this is where that safety to farm thing came in is it, I spent five years in court. It pretty much ruined my life farming. It ruined my life almost in, in completely. Like I wanted to start a family, not spend five years in court. I wanted to build up a farm, not spend this time in court. And I saw things being promoted and them telling us, you know, come and do these things that you'll have the support of legislature or these, you know, grants and, you know, other things that are hard to find and then hard to get because you need experience in farming to get grants or you need, you know, an educational background in ag to get grants and stuff like that. So not only those things that other people are going to have trouble getting, but we have to figure out how to make sure towns can't bully people out of farming. Because I was told pretty much by everybody, including Farm Bureau at one point, to just give up and maybe buy land somewhere else. And I'm in an ag district that's supposed to be protected, but towns don't recognize that. I helped a family in Lindaville, New York, a large Muslim family and they had bought land, different parts of land. They were going to start farming and the town bullied them so much, they ended up moving. And now they're back in the city of Niagara Falls. So there are farmers who are giving up in all these different areas. And I don't want us to, in the government, promote people to start farms in these areas without making sure there's protections from the town more than what ag and markets can do because ag and markets doesn't do really anything. They're a reactive program. So even when I made sure that they said everything I was doing in farming was okay and they sent that to the town, the town said they did not care and kept me in court for five years. They've kept an elderly farmer in court for over thir, uh, five years to $200,000. This is money that minorities will not be able to, or, you know, really anybody can be trying to put out when they're starting a new farm. And so I don't know how to get protection for the different people that I've mentioned, including, you know, trying to get for more diversity in farming because it, it was part of the town was a problem. And then the neighbors, you know, who didn't want to see it were part of a problem. In every case that I'm in, it's the town and the neighbors that are the problem. And they kind of worked together and they've gone after, they went after my job as a teacher. They've gone after this other, this Muslim family. They went after their jobs in the community. They slander people. And it's not something that they deny. When I do this advocacy work, this is what I do for Farm Bureau now, at least in my county, I record all of these conversations and they're not shy about saying things like, you know, you're the woman farmer who thinks she's in a farm in my town, or I don't care. You know, you know, who they are. This is how we're, you know, we don't want farmers like that in our town, which was the case of the Muslim, you know, family that I was working with. They're not, because there's no media attention on it, it's not getting brought up. So that's why I'm here today because we need to protect people starting farms in these small towns. And I don't know how to do that because ag and market is reactive and there's no laws, you know, stopping these towns from saying you can't fight City Hall and that they'll keep you in court or use the town assessor's officer, the building inspector or other ways to harass you or go after your job to keep you out. Sorry. Thank you. I know I ran out of time. I apologize.
Thank you. Senator Hinchey?
You, you kind of answered this towards the end, but I was going to ask if there was anything specific that they were going after for under the guise of what guys they were trying to, to ban, you know, or, or scare you off from farming. But I would say, as you see these as well, you know, please contact my office. As Chair of the Agriculture Committee, this is something that we should know. This is something that we want to know. And we are working right now actively working on beginner, beginning farmer grants and different types of supports for new and different people to get into farming and to support them in that way. And so please make sure this is, this is very enlightening and please make sure that you, you provide that information to us. I know you didn't be a testimony, but as you have these conversations, please let us know.
And I have reached out to our local representatives before. So Senator Ort and Karen McMahon are two of the representatives, Angela Morinello, because these are happening in their town. But when it was brought up, it was said, there's really not much we can do to help you fight against the town. And so that's when I started advocating for people because I realized it was something that was happening not just to me and other people. So Farm Bureau kind of helps me navigate it, but there's only so much that I can say or do in a town board meeting or at court representing somebody. Because they will, I mean, they literally at the board meeting in front of other people will say the most absurd things or tell you, you told me literally to just shut up. I wasn't welcome Pendleton, town of Pendleton. Shut up. Your opinions aren't welcome here in front of a coal room full of other people at this board. And it's just, so it's, it's frustrating and I don't, I don't even know how you, if you guys can help with this because towns, small towns kind of govern themselves. But I thought that it should be at least brought to attention. It's happening and that it will continue to happen and that we don't want to, to get more people to invest in farming with money that they have struggled to get like myself to be forced out of something that they really want to do. The farming end, you know, is, is easy compared to the trouble that I've had to maintain my right to farm.
Thank you. And I'm going to announce our next panel. We have Christine Hutchinson from Our Core Inc. And Tamika Dunkley from Seasoned Gives. So Christine, I'll let you go first.
Hi. Thank you for hearing me and thank you, more importantly, for acting on what you hear in this space today. I'm Christine Hutchinson. I'm an educator in the Newburgh School District of 18 years. I direct a small nonprofit, Our Core, which is an organization that empowers statistically and actually marginalized youth in multiple program areas. I'm a member of the Northeast Farmers of Color Network and on the board of the Northeast Farmers of Color Land Trust, member of Black Farmers United and the Steration. And I'm a supporter and admirer of the Black Farmer Fund. Our Core's agriculture education program seeks to diversify agriculture and address food justice to lessen inequities in our food system and not to coexist with them. We work with young people whose disconnection with their food is endemic of the historical disconnection of black people from their land. And in their conjuring of an image of a farmer, that image is definitively a white man. The very real lack of diversity in farming and the wordly accurate image that embodies the statistic that you've heard today, 139 black farmers of 50,000. And instantly diminishes the pool of potential farmers. One image of a farmer. Their attempts to connect black people to farming generally lead just to images of enslavement. So among the things that we teach them in our program are that black people have historically grown and after enslavement. So agriculture is for them to embrace their own history. And to do this educating, we have to meet them where they are, which is in urban areas. Urban agriculture is how we can create farmers as our current farmers age out. We've developed a program that generates an interest in farming and has a potential to produce farmers and citizens who prioritize New York State agriculture. Once they finish their work with us, they'll hit a brick wall. And that's the same brick wall I faced when I was a small poultry farmer with no agricultural community to support me. The resources that I needed were simply not there. Even with savings and a career, I couldn't afford the land that I needed to continue to grow poultry in Orange County. And in our core's work, we also cannot access the land to run our programs. Instead, we're piecemealing our work on land that others allow us, so they don't. And that demonstrates to these young people that there really is no honest work that we claim is most important. As we've approached parcels of land in Newburgh, New York over the last two years, we've been told time and again, that agriculture is simply not valuable enough to deserve a dedicated acre. Even on land that sat vacant for decades, multiple decades, just the idea of development wins out over agriculture every single time. Unless we turn to Black Farmer United nine solutions. Be number three, transferring 400 acres of land to the NEFAC Land Trust. Supporting black led urban farms in their empty lots and permanently protecting urban farms with conservation easements. We won't see an increase in black farmers. New York must make agricultural space a fiscally appealing option for struggling municipalities and individuals. Easement funding has to be made available to organizations that have the capacity to turn gravelly lots into food and skill producing spaces, particularly for our young people who have no other real connections to their foods. Committing land to the NEFAC Land Trust ensures that urban and rural lands are available to nurture crops, learners, farmers and our state. So I, I urge this organization to listen to what you hear today and actually act on it. Thank you.
Great. Tamika?
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for holding this hearing and having me here today. My name is Tamika Dunkley. I am a registered nurse, a mother of seven, activist and co-founder of Seasoned Gives. I'm also a member of Black Farmers United. Black and brown people make up 14% of the population, but account for less than 5% of the wealth in America. Despite the current trending focus on including black voices, we are not at the table when the most impactful decisions are being made. The only thing we are occasionally offered is a conditional seat at the table as opposed to ownership and equity at that table. In the wake of COVID-19, tens of millions of dollars has been allocated to fight food insecurity. But how much of that contracted work is going to black and brown farmers, manufacturers, transportation companies and distribution centers? Our Support Your Neighbor program located in the midst of a food desert in Midtown Kingston exemplifies how internet intentional spending with black and brown businesses can help a community thrive through our 9010 concept. Many times we don't have the financial backing, networks and affiliations, and we're not even able to learn of potential income earning opportunities. Even if we are MWBE certified, we don't find out about contracts until it's too late if we are notified at all. On the small chance the businesses are able to apply, they lose to the lowest possible bidder. There should be a clear and concise buying plan locally and on a state level to make conscious efforts to find and utilize black and brown vendors. The current systems are not working. Sites and organizations like the Black Farmers Fund, Northeast Farmers of Color, More Business Direct can funnel potential contractors and keep open lines of communication with current vendors of color. We must close the racial wealth gaps in order to create an equitable community for all its members that will only come through conscientious spending and prioritizing ownership and equity in all aspects of the food system. Black Farmer United is one of the largest representations of black farmers in New York State. And our voices should be heard and then actions need to be taken. There are nine solutions that have been presented and they need to be enacted as a first step, but it cannot stop there. The entire system needs a facelift. We want to believe in all of the wonderful monetary gestures that have been so eloquently advertised that we will be going to black and brown businesses and farmers. But logically, history will repeat itself again and again with the same narrative for the people who need the most help being left out. And this cycle will continue and our children will inherit the same problems unless we are taken into account and taken seriously. We need to create immediate and intentional pathways to getting funding, information and resources to people of color in this space. Northeast Farmers of Color has requested 400 acres for cultivation. The Black Farmers Fund and Seasons and Gives should be catalysts of funding to distribute to those who need it. Those whose businesses are on life support and the faint heartbeat of the community and representation of hope for our youth and for their future.
Thank you. Senator Bailey?
Thank you very much. Thank you all to all the chairs for this incredible hearing today. I just want to ask a really brief question. I guess it would go to Ms. Dunkley and Ms. Hutchinson. As related to, to, to black farming and, and, you know, ironically enough, there's an award behind me that I was at the same award ceremony as Karen Washington, who's an amazing farmer down here in the Bronx and she does a lot of urban farming. So my question to you would be, how can we, how, how can we get more involved in the, in the inner city? You mentioned Ms. Hutchinson, Orange County. I'm in the Bronx and I, I have a, I have an interest in sourcing of my food and trying to figure out how to teach my kids, where does their food come from? How do we get this to happen in the Bronx, right? Not to be hyper local. It can happen in Queens or in Brooklyn. I see other colleagues everywhere else in Syracuse and Westchester and everywhere where Michelle represents all, all 85 counties and George, I see everybody up here and I see how important it is, right? But I, I'm asking about how can we make sure that we get, that we, that we can get this to happen in like inner cities? And one of the things I was asking about, what are your feelings about vertical farming?
I'm, I'm happy to feel that. And the answer is access to land, permanent access to land. And vertical farming can happen on that land that's accessed permanently, but too often people are allowed to grow on a space for a year at a time. And then that land is snatched away from them and they have poured all sorts of, of human and financial resources into that space and it, it all goes to not be a good place to go. So it's, that's access to that space.
Okay. And, and I guess I would ask a question and you mentioned the, the, the small and dwindling number of, of, of black farmers, which is, you know, unfortunate to a kid whose grandfather grew up on a farm in North Carolina. How do we increase that? And how many other black farmer cooperatives? Cause I'm a big huge supporter of worker cooperatives and worker owned businesses. Are there like, what, what kind of black farmer cooperatives are there? And how can I be helpful in terms of, because you mentioned the land trust and the community land trust and that permanent land type of ownership. How many are there black farm cooperatives? And if not, how do we help get them going?
I'll say, when I was actively poultry farming, there were no black people to my knowledge. I couldn't find any. And it's just been within the law that there is a network of people of color in farming. So now I, I find myself connected to black people who are growing. And the organizations that we've mentioned are all organizations comprised entirely of, of people of color that any of us can tap into.
Okay. So if, if we could at some point, I, I can get your, if we can, I guess the Leo or somebody can get me your contact information so I can reach out to you. Cause I, I'd like to try to figure out a way to have a further dialogue because again, it, it's something that is, I think is critical. And I just wanted to thank you for your testimony. And shedding light on something that, you know, kind of goes unrecognized. I know my kids think the food comes from the fridge and they open it up, it's there, right? But I think it's important for them to, to, to know that, you know, that there is a chain of, you know, of a lot of hardworking people who, you know, you know, we could talk about the condition that, that they've had to toil under until we got this, until we came into the majority, right? But, but, um, until that point, I just wanted to say that just thank you for your testimony and thank you for allowing me the time to, to ask a couple of questions.
I'll reach out to your staff to initiate contact today.
Make it count.
Senator May?
I just wanted to touch on something really quickly is the key aspect of all this is funding and infrastructure to be able to support farmers and food systems. We need that funding and, and the infrastructure. That's a, that's a very key point. And that's what comes with land and ownership and equity.
Thank you so much.
So my question is about if, if people want to use their purchasing power to support farmers of color, what are the best ways to even find out where your food is coming from in the sense of, are there ways that food, individual buyers, food co-ops, institutional purchasers, people doing events, for example, or something like that, people who are purchasing the food? What, what are the best ways? And are there good models elsewhere for kind of identifying where your food is coming from?
There's a directory being created now by the Good Food Purchasing Product Project. I believe I have the name right. And one of the speakers later, Rebecca Williams can speak to that. And reaching out to organizations such as Black Farmer Fund, excuse me, Black Farmers United is a good way to find out who might be in your area. We actually have a map of black farmers on the website. So if you're looking to procure directly from a farmer, you could consult that map and see if anyone is in your area. And as we grow, more farms will be placed on that map.
Would there be interest in the creation of some kind of labeling system? I know we've worked on the New York Grown and Certified Program. There are various different other, you know, ways that consumers get guided to whatever it is environmentally friendly products or something like that. It seems like this would be, could, could be a potential intervention at the state level that we could do where there would be some kind of label. And I don't know how you would put it together.
That's an idea that I'd like to. I'd like to take that idea back to Black Farmers United. I think it is a good one.
Great. Thank you. And thanks for the great work you do.
Yeah.
Hey, thank you. I'm going to introduce our next two speakers. We have Dennis Derrick from the Corbin Hill Food Project and Michelle Hughes from Hudson Valley CSA Coalition. Dennis, we'll have you start.
Okay. Thank you for the invitation. My name is Dennis Derrick and I'm a member of the Black Farmers United New York State, a board member of Black Farmers Fund and the founder of Corbin Hill Food Project, a 10-year-old 501(c)(3) organization. Corbin Hill, while aggregating and distributing food across New York City through our Farm Share Program, has maintained a vision of our community owning its food system while building community wealth. We initially were financed as a startup with seven of our 11 investors being black and brown, accounting for 72% of our equity. We as investors look like and reflected the values of our community, that being sovereignty, shifting power and racial equity. One must remember 10 years ago, when you started using these terms, this was not something that made foundations or even the government want to even fund you. So that it was not surprising for us that we went our first three years without any government funding and very little foundation funding. I am supportive of the farmer, of the Black Farmers United New York State nine solutions. I would really like to address two of them today. One having to do with startups and the second one having to do with land. You know, 10 years ago, when we got started, there was no Black Farmers Fund. There was no, the kind of underwriting laws, rules that we had to face from the banks made it a superb, one heck of a burden to get started altogether. We found ourselves eventually being able to raise the money and to borrow the, borrow funds from the, from the banks at terms that were very, very difficult. That's the best way I could put it, but at least they let us through the door. It's interesting that five years ago, five years into Corbin Hill, we received a $350,000 grant from the state. And to everyone's surprise, we returned the money. It was all designed to make sure that we would become another statistics in what would be a self fulfilling prophecy of black failure. The way it was structured. So that in itself tells you that having your programs doesn't necessarily mean it suits or benefits any of us as black folks. The more important thing around this is the fact that because of us, using us as an example is a good, really sort of exemplifies the fact that there's really no data collected. Were it not for Mama Kay, Karen Washington collecting, we would never have been counted in the 2017 Agricultural Census. In general, we can say of the government, of the state government, that they collect very little, if any, data around black folks to know what their performance is about. So that in the absence of the collection of data, you're not accountable. We can't hold you accountable. You just have to hear the stories that we, we bring in from time to time to talk about in terms of where we stand. We recommend that data collection on outcomes and impact, the impact on blacks in the farming community be gathered so that we can hold these agencies accountable. Let me give you an example of access to capital. And I think Senator Hinkley knows about this. Since 2011, the state has invested more than $113 million in 143 farmland protection projects. As a matter of fact, the governor just released another $42 million towards this specific project. One would say not a single award was given to a black owned firm over that 11-year period, not a single dime. Okay? I should note that when these funds were distributed to the disadvantage of people of color, we as blacks assume to be both, in both categories are never represented. Our dreams and vision are consistently being deferred through a masking vocabulary that willfully excludes us. We would recommend that you remove this mask of the disadvantage behind those labels and report specifically and make available the data in terms of how it addressed blacks. Now speaking to the, speaking specifically to that, to that fund, we are now creating something at Corbin Hill called the Black Yard Farm, made up of five farmers all from the South Bronx who are beginning to set up a collective there in terms of farming. We hope, we hope, even though we know what the, the reasons are going to be given, that we, that this particular group can benefit from an easement under this particular program. We're looking forward to that. All right. And so not only will they be able to get the 95 acres that Corbin Hill is willing to transfer to these black farmers, black and brown farmers, but it also is an opening for BFA, NEFAC, to be able to get access to the 400 acres that they are also seeking. Let me return to the challenge of land. Let me return to the challenge of land. We know the aging population amongst the black, around white farmers. And we know how many of them are going to be retiring. Yet when we save the money, they do not sell to us. They find all the reasons not to sell to us. And so we need to be cognizant of what that means. You know, what we end up having to do as blacks is to lease land. And you would think that we are back in Mississippi, but this is New York State. Because at the end of three to five years, most of these black farmers, the land is taken away from them after they have invested in improving the land. So a major recommendation we would say is that you reexamine all of these programs that help to transfer land from those who are retiring. Why doesn't the state acquire them and then be able to sell them to us? At particular, if not sell, at least donate them to many of these particular communities. It is quite clear that as we look at the future, land and the access to capital, when combined with all the seven proposals that we find, can only create what we call community wealth, but also community health. Most people don't put a linkage between the two. They separate them. I want in future years, when others ask our children and grandchildren, where does your food come from? Their response will be, it comes from land owned by black farmers. They will be telling you that their land and capital form the foundation for their new intergenerational wealth. The wealth they clearly know was previously stolen from their ancestors. I thank you.
Thank you. And Michelle?
Thank you, senators, for the opportunity to address this committee today. I'm Michelle Hughes. I'm the Associate Director of Regional Food Programs at Glenwood Center for Regional Food and Farming. I'm also a new farmer myself. This year, I started Reclamation Herb Farm with my husband on what is traditional Mohican land in Columbia County. I'm here today representing the Hudson Valley Community Supported Agriculture Coalition, which is facilitated by Glenwood. The Hudson Valley CSA Coalition is a collaborative effort of over 100 farms that share the desire to bring the CSA experience to more of our neighbors and community members. As such, I will testify to two specific programs that we would like to recommend to the state that can improve access to fresh and healthy food in low-income communities and communities of color throughout the state, namely automating SNAP processing for CSA and a coordinated statewide nutrition incentives program. Community-supported agriculture has emerged as a broadly transformative model that can increase the economic viability of small and mid-sized farms, strengthen relationships between producers and consumers, revitalize local economies, and have overwhelmingly positive impacts on customer health and lifestyle behaviors, including increased fruit and vegetable consumption, fewer doctor visits, lower medical expenses, and overall improvement in maintenance of long-term health. The Hudson Valley CSA Coalition formed in 2017 out of the need for CSA farms to collaborate and better coordinate efforts to reach new customers, and also out of a desire to figure out how to make CSA more accessible to all people in our communities. Surveys of our membership have consistently found that the overwhelming majority of farms want to better serve low-income or low-income and food insecure neighbors, but there are significant barriers to making this happen. In 2018, we developed a pilot called CSA as a SNAP to address these barriers. We tied this initiative to the SNAP program. This is the most well-known, consistently funded initiative designed to combat food insecurity. And I'd also like to note that because of systemic, the systemic racism and oppression of people of color that have led to historic inequities that we're discussing today, SNAP recipients, both in New York State and nationwide, are disproportionately people of color. So accepting SNAP as a payment type certainly helps open access to CSA and creates a degree of affordability. However, there is a structural mismatch between the programs. The key that makes CSA such a powerful tool for farm financial success is that customers invest in the farms upfront by buying shares at the start of the season, which creates early season cash flow for farms. However, SNAP users are allotted benefits monthly and cannot pay for food more than two weeks in advance of receiving it, which means that with a traditional CSA model, either farms have to let go of that economic benefit or SNAP users can't be a part of it. To solve this, the CSA is a SNAP program established a revolving incentive fund that both pays farmers in advance for CSA shares that go to SNAP customers and subsidizes those shares at a 50% discount. SNAP users in turn can pay for their shares on a weekly or bi-weekly basis with their EBT cards. However, there are barriers that CSA as a SNAP doesn't solve. Having to do weekly transactions sets SNAP customers apart from other CSA members who have prepaid and can just pick up their shares and go. And in rural areas or in situations where cell coverage is low, transaction issues are common since EBT terminals require an internet connection with high bandwidth. So these transaction issues further stigmatize SNAP users. As such, we would like to recommend that the state put in place a program similar to the SNAP CSA Pilot Program adopted by Massachusetts. This program is facilitated by their Office of Transitional Assistance, operates under a waiver from the USDA, allowing SNAP authorized CSA farms to set up automatic monthly payments with SNAP customers. This eliminates the need for weekly payments at distribution and creates an equal customer experience for SNAP users, which we believe is essential to food justice. The maximum monthly SNAP allotment for a family of four is less than $700, which makes purchasing fresh fruits and vegetables difficult. For this reason, our CSA as a SNAP program includes this matching incentive that subsidizes half the cost of the share. In addition, New York State has at least six different nutrition incentive programs, including the Double Up Bucks program already mentioned, New York City Health Bucks and others. These programs lack coordination. Customers are often unaware that they exist or that they qualify for these programs. The benefits are limited as to where they can be used, and the incentive formats, often vouchers or tokens, can be stigmatizing. As such, we also recommend that New York State put into place a statewide nutrition incentive program similar to the Healthy Incentives Program or HIP in Massachusetts. This program provides an additional monthly allotment to SNAP users when they purchase fruits and vegetables from local farmers markets, farm stands, CSAs, and mobile markets. The money they spend at these retailers is immediately added back to their EBT cards and can be spent at any SNAP retailer. This type of incentive provides greater flexibility and choice for customers, streamlines the point of sale and redemption process. And because the redemption process is automatic, electronic, and invisible, it eliminates stigma for SNAP users. Program is also administered by their Department of Transitional Assistance. So after they enacted the program in 2017, the sales at farm retailers have increased by 1,250%. They've seen an 86% increase in SNAP retailers overall, and they estimate it has helped create 40 to 60 new ag sector jobs. So overall, it has increased farm viability, energized farmers markets and CSAs, and made local food more affordable and accessible. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Senator Hinckley?
Hi, thank you. I thank you for everything that both of you have said. And Michelle, a lot of the pieces that you just talked about with SNAP and CSAs are really informative and really helpful. Thank you. I would just like for the group, can you just talk a little bit about the benefits for farmers to join CSAs and what that means for them and how that's beneficial?
Right, for farmers who join? Yeah, so, right, so as I mentioned, farms get paid upfront, which is extremely important to their, to their farm viability. So, you know, you need the money at the start of the season, and this applies to, you know, black, indigenous, people of color farmers as well, you know, we, yeah, you need that money upfront to get started. And right, and so with SNAP, it's, you, you can, you know, there's no, there's no way for SNAP customers to pay that way. So yeah, I think, right, so, you know, farms, they then have like a relationship with their customers. You know, you're building that connection. It's a community of people. You're having, you know, it's guaranteed income for the whole season, which is really important.
Right. I raised it because especially as we're talking about how to get new and BIPOC and younger people into farming, it seems like a really good, like something that we should be expanding on and growing further, a model that we should be really promoting to make sure that people do have that upfront capital and do have that connection to markets and to people directly, especially as we move into a moment where people are buying locally more and kind of want to know, go to the farm stand, know where their food is coming from. As we've seen through COVID with massive supply chain disruptions and things happening with contaminated food, and so people are shifting more in that direction. And I'm I'm very eager to figure out how we can start to expand those models even more for communities that may not already have them set up.
Yeah, and for farms, you know, who know that they want to grow for a specific community, you can build that relationship and grow culturally specific foods that are really hard to find for folks. So, yeah, I think it's, it's, I'm really glad that you're looking, looking into this as a way to support new and BIPOC farmers.
Thank you very much.
Great. And Senator Ramos, did you have a question as well?
Yeah, hi. It's so, it was so good to hear your testimony. So good to meet you. Before being an elected official, I was on the board of my local CSA. And I cannot, you know, overstate how valuable a resource our CSAs are to bringing fresh food into communities like mine. I wanted to learn a little bit more about the Massachusetts Plan. If you could share a few more details about that. How long has the program been used? How has it been able to scale up?
Yeah, so the program, I believe, began in 2018 or 2019, and they started with four pilot farms. So it was really small and and basically, right, so they, they have a special waiver with the USDA. And then when COVID happened, I know that they, they were, you know, they scaled it up really quickly because there was such a need for it. And so they, I don't know how many more farms they let into the pilot, but it was, it was greatly expanded. I want to say like it was maybe fewer than 100, but around there. And so, yeah, I, I'm, it's still in the pilot phase, so I'm hoping that they will continue to to fund it there. And I know that there, I could connect you to folks who have more of the legislative and implementation details of the project of how they got it done. I don't, I don't have.
No, that's really helpful. I think, you know, obviously we're limited in what we can do with SNAP at the state level. So just trying to figure out, you know, how it is that we can be the most helpful, you know, within our limits is, I think, really important. But thank you for your testimony.
Great. Thank you. And I'm going to announce our next panel, which is going to be Mohammed Mumberra and Judson Reed, Mohammed from Providence Farm Collective and Judson Reed from Cornell Cooperative Extension.
This is Judson. I believe that Mo is before me, but I'm not seeing him in, in the Zoom right now.
I'm here.
Sorry, Mo, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. And then to get this opportunity right now, having a little bit to talk. My name is Mohammed Mumberra. I live in Buffalo, New York. Today, I want to bring attention to the immigrant and refugee in Buffalo who are farmers. And I want to tell about the Providence Farm Collective and Somali Banti Community Farm, a nonprofit organization that helped immigrant and refugee community access rural farmland and the knowledge they needed to farm a business and grow traditional food under their community in Western New York. My route of farming, I was born in Somalia, and I've been farming experience background from my country. My Somali Banti community faces many challenges in our food system here. We don't have an access for the culture food because it is not available in a store for our community in the city of Buffalo. It is not easy to access grocery stores that have a fresh organic produce. It is too expensive in the city. We don't have an access to clean up farmland enough space to produce a food for the community. Because of this, it is harder to keep the culture together teach our youth. What I wanted to do for my community is to make a change in the food system to bring a culture food and a Western together so that we can share our culture through to the food. Started farming, I started farming in 2017 Somali Banti Community Farm in East Aurora, New York. Sooner after my community started farming, other immigrant and refugee community come to us and wanted to farm. In 2019, I helped fund and Providence Farm Collective and 2020, seven other community joined, joining with the Somali Banti Farming together. In our first season as a PFC, we had 275 farmers who grew, harvested 23,000 pounds of fresh, traditional food important to our culture and health. PFC farmers organically grow African and Asia produce that we cannot find in a grocery store in America, like a white eggplant, maize, emerald, and leaf pumpkin, sweet potato. We donated and solidly produced to 2,300 members of, of our family and the community who live who live in a food desert in Erie and Niagara County. We sold the produce to the East Aurora Co-op Market through to the other organization in Buffalo, like Buffalo Go Green and Massachusetts Project Avenue. We able to more helpfully cook our traditional meal and some extra income for the shared culture with, with our youth. Through Providence Farm Collective, we are able to overcome a challenge that we had many others of farmer faces of farming in Western New York. It is very difficult from Somalia. The climate, soil, irrigation, machinery, and business strategy, all different. PFC got a federal USD grant to work with the CSC, I mean, Canal Yeah, CSC and a Widi to teach our farmers about vegetable and livestock production and how to start a management and a small business. We also had a summer youth, youth employment and internship program for 220 youth in our community with the, with the help of the Erie County, which important for the family and heritage would also be great if we could get some level support from the New York State. We do federal government in the county. In this spring, we moved into farmland in Ochopec and working with the Western New York. We purchased 37 acres for protect, it will be forever farmland access for the a big challenge for, for the farmers. We are very happy. Also starting a CSC and receive a grant so PFC can purchase some produce from the farmer and a fair price to donor to the local food bank like Feed Buffalo and the West Side Community Service. We got a grant to help with transportation between Ochopec and the city of Buffalo. The transportation area need state to support for. There, there is a bus route going through today to our farmer in Ochopec, but does not coming back to Buffalo. I'm asking to make a public transportation for farmer land, farming, and education and more accessible, especially immigrant and refugee. I'm also asking to support organization like Providence Farm Collective, the Somali Banti Farm. So we can reach our goals for farming. It has been struggle working with the state representative because of the farmers do not have, do not live in the same district, the same farm.
Thank you. I'm so, I'm so sorry, Mo. I just want to, in the, in the interest of time, I just want to ask you to drop it up. I know Judd is going to speak as well. And you'll notice that there's a clock up in here as well.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mo. My name is Judson Reed with Cornell Cooperative Extension. I want to thank Mo as well as the many other speakers here this afternoon that have shared their point of view. I want to thank Senator Hinckley. I want to thank Senator Hinchey and our other elected officials for listening today. I'm here to represent the many efforts of Cornell Cooperative Extension to support diverse refugee populations that are increasingly participating in farming in New York State. Refugees from throughout the world come to New York each year, and Cornell Cooperative Extension is proud to support their entry and contribution to society. Over the last 10 years, New York State has received nearly 36,000 refugees from over 65 countries. Africa and East Asia contribute the majority of these new Americans. These diverse groups are making their homes in counties such as Erie, Monroe, Oneida, Onadoga, as well as New York City. Today's refugees follow the American tradition of flight from persecution with a hope for a life of respect and dignity. Here in their new state, refugees are recognized as contributors to improving our communities. They're associated with increased housing stock value, the preservation of manufacturing jobs, the creation of new businesses, and importantly, reversing the trend of population loss in our upstate cities. Agriculture or farming has been adopted by refugee resettlement organizations as one method to introduce language, job skills to these populations. Agriculture can also contribute to these refugees' sense of well-being as a therapeutic activity and the opportunity to produce culturally relevant, fresh, and healthy food. That fresh food is not only consumed by these new farmers, but is often sold in food insecure portions of our New York cities. I want to call out some of our partner organizations, such as Providence Farm Collective that we just heard from, the Mohawk Valley Resource Center, RISE in the Syracuse area, the International Rescue Committee in the Bronx. All of these facilitate farming opportunities in both urban and rural settings. Cornell Cooperative Extension is able to contribute to those efforts with the depth of knowledge in agricultural sciences that we have. We work directly with these populations by developing educational programs around business planning, crop, pest management, food safety, and marketing. We often work at these farms with the support of translators. As an example, the Cornell Vegetable Program is a regional team in the western part of the state that has worked with Journey's End Urban Farm for over a decade. The farmers at Journey's End come from many different countries, including Nepal, the Congo, and Afghanistan. As a result of our interaction with that refugee farm, we have seen a yield of fresh fruits and vegetables increase by nearly 50%, and that means an equivalent increase in revenue for that refugee farm. Participants in this program benefit by developing job skills and a sense of integration and ownership. In order to contribute to this continued success of our new neighbors, we see several opportunities for support. One is translation services. Many refugees are still learning English. Translation services are critical for successful on-farm trainings. Funding to support the presence of proficient translators could make farming more inclusive in New York State. Next is access to working capital.
And Judson, I just want to, I know we're just a little bit over time, if you want to just-
Sure.
... remark. Sorry about that.
So access to working capital, access to viable farmland. In many of the examples I've shared with you, there are rural landowners with idle land that have partnered with refugee populations. Can we develop programs that will connect those two populations? Transportation, as Mo mentioned, and finally, education. For all farmers, agriculture is a very difficult business with tight margins, and education to help people be successful in this business is essential, and we're very proud to contribute to those educational efforts. Thanks for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you. And Senator Bailey?
Yes, being mindful of time, I just wanted to, I guess, make one comment about the culturally competent produce. Mohammed, you mentioned something that I think was, it's something that we don't highlight enough in our communities. And I think that we should take a serious look at making sure that we think about, when we think about New York grown and everything like that, that we think about culturally competent produce. Because I know in my neighborhood, the folks from the Caribbean have a significantly Caribbean population. There are only certain places in the area that you can get them, that you can get certain things that remind them from home. So giving folks the ability to be able to grow those culturally competent or comforting foods is something that's critical. And I would ask that we link up, figure out about that. But Judson, to your point, the question that I had is about the language access. Language access is critical. How do you see that building out in terms of being able to expand it? How do you see it? How would you envision us being able to do that as a legislature?
I would like to see secure funding for proficient translators. Oftentimes, we are relying on an individual who may be the most proficient in an audience, but translation is a learned skill, and I'd like to see people compensated for that. And that adds to the professionalism of our meetings. If we recognize that language matters, and people need to be able to hear our educational materials in a language they understand clearly, that's very critical. And I just want to support what you're saying about culturally relevant food. At many of these farms is the only place where these populations will find food that speaks to their culture and their recipes.
Without a doubt. Thank you so much for your time. And I yield back. Thank you.
Senator May?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to follow up on that, too. I know the Salt City Harvest Farm here in Syracuse was founded partly just because there were food items that weren't available. And I think it's mostly a Somali group that started it, but that kind of continuum between creating jobs, between education, agricultural education, linguistic and cultural competency, and growing food that is, that has a demand that isn't being satisfied is a really important thing. So I didn't really have a question. I just wanted to say I appreciate what you're working on. And I think especially as refugees are so important to our local economies and culture, the more that we can support that kind of agriculture, the better.
Onadoga County is a great example, and the Cooperative Extension Office there deserves a lot of credit for working there with the populations. Mo, anything you want to say here?
Yeah, just like, like I'm gonna say that I would also be like, if you guys, you have a time in the summertime, if you guys, you could come over, see at our farm, how we operating the farm, and also get a little bit some history with the immigrant or refugee who are living in Buffalo, so that you could hear their history, and then why they start farming. So you could get a more history from them. If you guys, you have those time, and they could come over and see what we're doing here.
Mo, we would love to come. So we will organize, we'll organize a trip. We'd love to do it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And I'm going to introduce our next panel. And I'm sorry, I'm just going to remind you both that there's a timer up in the corner, so just try and be mindful of that as you're doing your remarks. So we have Rebecca Williams from Good Food Buffalo Coalition slash The Massachusetts Ave Project, and Ribka Getitju from Community Food Advocates. So Rebecca, we'll start with you.
Hello, and thank you for organizing this important hearing, everybody. My name is Rebecca Williams, and I live in a small town called Naples in the Finger Lakes of New York State. I'm a facilitator and organizer, working with community leaders on collaborative projects, conducting strategic planning, and supporting coalitions advocating for food systems change. In 2016, when working in an urban agriculture organization in Buffalo, I had begun talking about the need to support Black farmers in the region, and I heard many people say that there are no Black farmers, which I knew was wrong. Of course, there were Black farmers. There are today. And if those farmers were unseen by the very professionals meant to serve them, those farmers were not being served. Of course, so it was in 2016 that seed was planted for me to start organizing with Black farmers across the state to raise their profile and ensure that they have a platform to advocate for what they need. For that reason, I am proud to be one of the founding members of Black Farms United, and I firmly stand by Black Farmers United's nine solutions for racial inequity in New York agriculture. But today, I am here representing the Good Food Buffalo Coalition, a coalition which has the support of many partners, both statewide and national, who work together to highlight the opportunities that values-based institutional purchasing policies and engaged community coalitions present to legislators such as yourselves. The Good Food Purchasing Program, or GFPP, is a flexible, metrics-based model for evaluating current food purchasing practices and aligning institutional food procurement with community values. Since 2012, the GFPP program has been adopted by 54 institutions across the country, and has been written into the official policies of major jurisdictions like Los Angeles, Boston, Chicago, and Cook County. Together, GFPP adopters represent nearly 1 billion in food spending, clearly a powerful lever to improve people's lives and the economy in those communities. New York State could be the first state to pass GFPP policy. Although one of the key goals of the Good Food Buffalo Coalition is to support BIPOC farmers through GFPP policy, those farmers in New York State currently struggle to access institutional markets because of a host of issues, some of which you've been hearing about today. In the fall of 2020, our coalition supported supply chain research conducted by graduate students at Yale. Their research found that many BIPOC farmers in New York experience barriers in pursuing institutional contracts, and that there are a range of labor violations and low union representation within companies within the food supply chain. Those findings are published in the Transparency for Justice Report, which I will make available along with my written remarks. I hope that you will read the report because their recommendations align with BFU's nine solutions for racial inequity, particularly solution number nine, which is to create a comprehensive plan to increase the number of Black farmers in New York State who are thriving. For example, for how to organize the creation of such a comprehensive plan, we encourage state legislators to work with our community-based coalitions to create a platform that reflects not only the needs of Black farmers, but all BIPOC farmers and workers, to ensure that the plan addresses the needs of racially diverse actors throughout the state food system. Wrapping it up, overcoming the barriers experienced by BIPOC farmers and workers in New York State will require all of us working together. And the first step in working together is acknowledging that BIPOC farmers are out here, which you are doing today. So thank you for seeing us, hearing us, and acknowledging the work we've been doing. I look forward to answering any questions and sharing more about the report and the program in my written remarks. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Ribka?
Thank you, everyone. I first and foremost want to extend gratitude to all of you for bringing us all together to this hearing and for this hearing to discuss concrete methods to transform and truly diversify agriculture. I'm speaking here today as the Director of the New York City Good Food Purchasing Program Campaign, and in partnership with colleagues here in New York City, in Buffalo, and in cities and states across the country advocating for the adoption and implementation of a values-based approach to public food procurement, as well as Black Farmers United. A truth that may be known by many, but that needs to continually be censored in the state's work to diversify agriculture, is the acknowledgement that the history of our agricultural sector in our state and in our nation is one that is rooted in a deep legacy of both intentional and inadvertent inequity and injustice. A legacy that has woven itself into how our local, regional, national, and global food systems are structured to this very day. It's precisely due to this history that a hearing of this nature is not only helpful, but necessary to the survival of our agricultural industry, and the place that BIPOC or Black Indigenous and people of color food producers and farmers have within it. Within this, we also know that New York State also holds a legacy of progressive policies, approaches to policy. Together, and today, we have a unique opportunity before us to transform the way that public institutions use taxpayers' dollars to systematize racial justice, and to meet myriad labor, nutrition, local economy, environmental sustainability, and animal welfare goals through the Good Food Purchasing Program. The Good Food Purchasing Program is a framework to accomplish just that. The program provides an opportunity to address racial inequities through every link in the food chain, from the farm to the consumers of food provided by government agencies. COVID-19, we know, has shown a tragic light on our nation's longstanding health disparities, as well as critical vulnerabilities in the food system, and so much more. It's been revealed that meeting both the emergency and sustained feeding needs of communities throughout New York State can be addressed through a strong and diversified food economy that can pivot more quickly in the wake of any disaster. Our state's BIPOC farmers and food producers are an essential component of our supply chain, and we must strategically create avenues that disrupt, very strategically disrupt, the procurement barriers that have made it challenging for them to access institutional food contracts. The Good Food Purchasing Program ultimately aims to, on one hand, hold large vendors accountable to better practices, while also ensuring that small and historically marginalized BIPOC farmers and food producers have more pathways and opportunities to contract with our public agencies to feed their communities. As Rebecca mentioned earlier, they are here, and have been here, and will continue to be. We were also pleased to see approaches to implementing the Good Food Purchasing Program in New York City's 10-year food plan, Food Forward NYC. Many of my colleagues and partners who have spoken before me have very clearly laid out strategies that would support values-based food procurement. And I'd like to take a quick moment to discuss state procurement law. As outlined by the New York State Office of General Services, New York State's procurement laws are structured so that they, quote, "ensure fair and open competition, guard against favoritism, fraud, and corruption, ensure that the results meet agency needs, and protect the interests of the state and its taxpayers." A particular interest, though, to us is New York State General Municipal Law 103, which broadly governs procurement for goods and services. This law requires that any purchase contracts over $20,000 that go through a public agency, both on the municipal and state levels, must inevitably go through a competitive bidding process in which the contract must ultimately be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder, quote, "that can offer the best value," which I state Finance Law 163, is defined by quality, cost, and efficiency, which together serve as the primary indicators of a responsive and responsible contractor. We must also contend with the reality that MWBE provisions alone, or minority and women-owned business and enterprise certification systems, will not adequately infuse our agricultural industry with our racial equity principles. While many BIPOC farmers and food producers might be interested in not only winning what could be very stable and reliable public contracts, but also supplying food for their communities through public agencies, state procurement laws, as they're currently structured, make it incredibly difficult, and too often impossible, for them to even consider responding to public food bids. Mega agribusinesses are essentially usually more equipped to provide a lower price point for goods for public agencies, which oftentimes make them more viable candidates for public contracts. This is not a coincidence. I'd like to just-
Okay. Sorry, I was just going to start wrapping it up. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Leah. Ultimately, and understandably, the state wants to ensure that public monies work for the benefit of the taxpayers. However, I challenge us to consider what it would mean for our state to examine creating pathways for BIPOC farmers and food producers to be able to access institutional markets as a means of working towards the public interest. While a cost-benefit analysis might appear to be easier in the case of an acquisition of a school bus, for example, where efficiency and quality might be, might appear to be more straightforward to quantify, I believe it would behoove us to ask ourselves, what values with regards to our food system do we, as the state, intend our public dollars to be used for? There's much more that I speak about in my written testimony. I'd like to lift up that these suggestions are in alignment with the nine solutions for racial equity in New York State agriculture developed by Black Farmers United, New York State, and would love to talk more, to think creatively together about how we would tap into the resources and the expertise of farmers, food producers, partners, right here in New York State, to really substantively address these barriers in New York State procurement law. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you both. Any senators have any questions? All right. Thank you. Then I'm going to introduce our next panelist, which is Catherine Soul and Ashley Offer from Teens for Food Justice.
Thank you, Senators Crusoe, Ramos, and Hinchey, for your leadership in calling attention to the multifaceted, systemic, and deep-seated challenges of building an equitable food system within New York, and nationally, and for including Teens for Food Justice in this conversation. Teens for Food Justice is galvanizing a youth-led food justice movement to ensure that all New Yorkers have access to fresh, healthy food, and to end the cycle of diet-related disease and poor health outcomes disproportionately faced by low-income communities of color. TFFJ empowers middle and high school students from these- TFFJ empowers middle and high school students from these communities to build and run indoor hydroponic farms, growing thousands of pounds of produce annually within their schools that is served daily at lunch and distributed by the youth to surrounding communities. They also master the knowledge and skills to serve as nutrition and health ambassadors for their peers, families, and neighbors, and as advocates for a just food system who can lead themselves and others towards healthier futures. The COVID-19 pandemic has only underscored the critical importance of building localized, fair-wage food economies and infrastructure in our historically marginalized Black and Brown communities, which have long suffered from lack of healthy food access and have now borne the brunt of the pandemic across every metric. A history of food insecurity leading to poor health and greater susceptibility to disease such as COVID, loss of income due to much of resident employment focused on the service industry, particularly low-wage food sector jobs which disappeared during the pandemic, and a massive emergency pandemic food relief program reliant on sourcing whatever food is available from wherever possible, but too often not local or healthy. A comprehensive and holistic local food economy and infrastructure means a rethinking of how we utilize land and space to take advantage of new methods and technologies for food production, including indoor environments such as affordable housing, community centers, and schools. It also means support for community-based and let food hubs that give control of food production, distribution, and processing to resident entrepreneurs, provide good, fair-wage jobs to community members, build a neighborhood economic engine, and ensure that good food can be found locally, even in a crisis. Finally, it requires rethinking of how we educate our youth to be not just workers, but future leaders of these enterprises and this movement. This is the critical path to a robust, equitable, and food-secure future.
Great, thank you, and Ashley?
Hi, thank you guys for allowing us to speak today. My name is Ashley O'For, and I'm a senior at Newtown High School. And I have the privilege of working with Kathy in Teens for Food Justice. Basically, Teens for Food Justice allows children my age and younger to kind of dismantle what we've been taught about food and how people, I'm sorry, how food is distributed and how food kind of works as a business rather than a riot. Simply, food justice kind of means that everyone, no matter their financial status, no matter how hard they work, no matter where they come from, all are deserving of healthy and quality food. While working in Teens for Food Justice, I've kind of learned about how food is kind of marketed towards poorer people and have been marketed towards people who are a little bit richer. They strategically put fast foods in neighborhoods that do not have the money to kind of buy the food from Trader Joe's and stuff like that. And, I'm sorry, I'm stumbling on my words. But it, I'm so sorry, I've lost my train of thought. I think that food justice is really important because, I'm so sorry.
You're doing great, Ashley.
I'm fine.
You're good, and you're right, you're making a very good point. It's very true.
Working with other children in Teens for Food Justice kind of allows all of us to kind of share experiences of how the food industry has kind of impacted us. I know, from a personal standpoint, growing up poor, I never really thought that I was deserving of quality food, and it kind of struck me really badly when I kind of dismantled that during Teens for Food Justice. I think during the pandemic especially, there has been kind of a disparity for food that we've never really spoken about before, and it kind of sucks that it's taken until now for us to really talk about it. But I think through Teens for Food Justice, we're kind of educating the next generation to be prepared and to teach younger generations that they are deserving of food, no matter what their background is. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, and I see Senator Hinchy has a question.
I was just gonna say, I think that's incredibly important, Ashley. Thank you for making that point. You know, everybody, no matter where you live, where you come from, who you are, deserves access to locally sourced, healthy food, and that's one of the primary reasons why we're here today, talking about this. I would just love to know how you got connected, Ashley, with Teens for Food Justice?
So, I'm part of my school's key club for like the past, since I was a freshman, and we're kind of intertwined with like doing all kinds of community service. And then my key club teacher thought that I would be a really good match in Teens for Food Justice, and I've been intertwined with it, I wanna say, for the past couple of months, and it's really been an eye-opener.
That's great, thank you, thanks for joining us today.
Great, thank you both. And I am going to now turn over our next panelist, which are Annika Abraham and Dayami, I'm so sorry if I meant to pronounce that Durazio, who are both from Farm School, New York City.
Thank you so much for inviting us to participate in this hearing today. I have been so grateful to see so many powerful advocates and stand alongside them on this panel, on all of these panels today. My name is Anika Abraham, I am a wife, a mother. You will probably hear my offspring pounding on the floor above me, excuse me. I'm a lifelong New York City resident, and most pertinent to this hearing, I'm a member of Black Farmers United, New York State, a board member of Black Farmers Fund. I'm the granddaughter of three incredible farmers, some from Alabama, some from the US Virgin Islands. I'm a teacher, I'm a champion, I'm a midwife to hundreds of farmers through Farm School NYC, which is the organization I'm the executive director of. Through my oral testimony, I hope to lift up how essential urban farming is and farm training is to diversifying our nation's whitest profession, which is farming. So, New York's Farm School NYC offers urban agricultural training to adults through programs, as well as through twenty different courses, over four hundred and thirty hours of courses every single year. They're tailored to the growing seasons, and they offer hands-on skill-building, professional development, and timely work in flourishing urban agricultural sites all over New York City and surrounding areas. Our core constituency are Black and Brown beginning farmers and food justice advocates, and our students learn that we are not facing what so many people call food deserts, but we're really facing food apartheid. And by that, we mean a term that doesn't treat our marginalization as people of color as a naturally occurring ecosystem like a desert or a grassland or a forest. It's not that. This is a structured, structural, racialized, political, economic, and social system that's created the disparities that we're working against right now. But that being a system, it's a system that we can work together to interrogate and dismantle. And that work is generational work. It's also work that we can't do in isolation, and that's why Farm School NYC has partnered and is a member of Black Farmers United, New York State. The Nine Solutions that have been mentioned so many times during this hearing for really good reasons underscore how essential education, training, and technical assistance and support are to existing Black farmers and scores of young and beginning Black farmers who are called the profession, Black and Brown farmers. And I know this because I was one of these aspiring young farmers. I'd like to say not too long ago, but not quite. Inspired by my grandparents, who grew everything that their children ate, I went to a renowned agricultural training program in California back in 2011 that has trained really hundreds of sustainable farmers over fifty years. And I can't recall not one Black or Brown faculty member, I can't recall any experts that were brought in that looked like me, that had my background and experience, and that was incredibly disheartening to me and discouraging to me. And that's why I was so drawn to what Farm School NYC does and many other organizations that are part of these small nonprofit initiatives to train farmers in New York State. It's so important to have that representation shown, to show that it's possible for us to do this work. So, we urge legislators to really invest in these Black and Indigenous, people-of-color-led and centered agricultural training programs, to resource these organizations to do this work, and to really understand that it's important that people who reflect cultural heritage teach regenerative agricultural techniques. The origins and that relationship between sustainable and regenerative agriculture is really the roots of Black and Indigenous agrarian experience, and that is something that we can underscore through these types of educational opportunities. I also really want to just underscore the importance of urban agriculture. You've heard the statistics about how underrepresented Black farmers are in New York State, and I just wanna really emphasize that in order for us to have true justice around Black farmers in New York State, you have to consider urban agriculture. Ninety-three percent of African-Americans in New York State live in-
Anika, I just wanna encourage you to, thank you, but-
Yes, I will, so just leaving you with that stat. So, ninety-three percent of Black folks in New York State live in New York City. The majority of the other seven percent live in urban areas. If we are not training Black farmers and Brown farmers in urban areas, we are actually doing a disservice, a racialized disservice to diversifying agriculture. That is where they farm, that is where they're trained, and that's where they come from when they go out into other rural communities to farm. So, I really wanna urge our legislators to invest in urban agriculture as well when we're thinking of training programs, so, thank you so much.
Thank you. Dayami?
Hi, my name is Dayami, and I've grown up in the Bronx, New York, also known as Lenape-Hocking Land. I'm grateful to be here and to have witnessed all the brilliant testimony shared thus far. It's really an honor. I'm drawn to farming through my family and through health. Exposure to environmental organizations led me to get a bachelor's in environmental studies, and I'm now studying herbal medicine. I also study at Farm School, which I'll go into in a second. I worked for Parks and Recreation for two years, and I spent a year at the Open Space Institute, which is a land trust in New York, and realized I'm constantly pulled toward food and environmental justice. In these organizations, I was often one of very few people of color and/or queer folks. Oftentimes, they hired people who did not live in our neighborhoods to direct like land practices, and it felt inauthentic and oppressive. Eventually, through these green networks, I found Farm School NYC. My favorite part is that it centers Black, Brown, and Indigenous practices in all of our classes. It's the most complete and well-rounded education I've ever participated in, and I've been in many, many classes in many educational spaces. It's flexible understanding, and we're honest and truthful about the realities of racism, classism, climate change, and how they directly relate, drive, and form our food system. It's really empowering. I want everyone to go to Farm School. It connects so clearly the steps between how plants began on the planet to how we physically get food on our tables. Farm School provides a structure also, organizationally, that I believe can be reflected in a lot of other organizations. I found a path to queer and of color farmers, which I did not think was a possibility when I was studying in undergrad. People miss many of those steps in between our food system, and there is land and financial debt that the United States and New York State owes to Black, Brown, and Indigenous communities. New York State can lead the way with a path towards food sovereignty. Nutritionally-dense and non-chemically-exposed foods are crucial to our health and well-being. I'm also in the process of purchasing a health food store in the Bronx. For thirty years, it's a Black-owned business that's provided quality, organic herbs and food to the Bronx. And so, I think about the food system and how do I price products in this retail store and still have them be affordable, and also have them be honest about what the real costs of our food is. The costs that we have in our supermarkets are not reflective of equitable practices. So, yeah, I support the Black Farmers United, New York State, Northeast Farmers of Color Land Trust with non-debt-based funding, directly engaging in these processes more than once a year, more than, you know, once in a blue moon, doing regular conversations where we can actually form a relationship and lead together, and that will be revolutionary and sort of grounding in the way that food is. So, yeah, thank you for your time and energy and for planting seeds, because that's what y'all are doing.
Great, thank you both so much, Denny, senators have questions? No? All right, great, thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Gabriela Perreira, I'm so sorry about this, who works for the Northeast Farmers of Color Land Trust, which we've heard a lot about today.
Thank you. I am Dr. Gabriela Perreira, and thank you so much, senators, for making the space for this conversation. I'm a farmer, I'm a scientist, I'm an immigrant, and a member of the LGBT community. I'm also the Land Network Program Co-Director at the Northeast Farmers of Color Land Trust. As our elder Lila Watson once said, "If you have to come to help me, you are wasting your time. If you have to come because your liberation is bound with mine, let us work together." The Northeast Farmers of Color Land Trust started in 2018. It is a Black Indigenous-driven land trust that embraces the covenants of collaboration to advance liberation for all. Today, NIFOC staff and board of directors embody diverse skill sets in cooperative development, climate justice, food and land sovereignty, farming, education, and global Indigenous way of honoring the land and one another. NIFOC is supported by a constellation of values-aligned, allied, and civilian organizations provided technical and legal support in New York, like Black Farmers Fund, Farm School New York, Soulfire Farm, Black Farmers United, and Corbin Hill Food Project. In our work, we prioritize the complex, interwoven healing work of honoring Indigenous sovereignty, advancing reparations for descendants of enslaved people, and making welcome those like me who have come to these lands out of the hope for a better life. This work is very personal to me. We are advancing permanent land and secure land tenure through remittating land and seeds. We also creating safe space for community through the Northeast Farmers of Color Network. This network, it is an informal alliance of Black, Latinx, Indigenous, and Asian farmers. We are a total of four hundred forty-nine farmers on which we collectively envision ways to be in reciprocity with the land and redefining the word "farmer" as stand for. Our purpose are simple, to break the isolation of being a farmer of color in the Northeast, to share skills, resources, and time with one another, and to coordinate our policies, demands, and catalyze reparations for Black Indigenous POC, farmers, and landlords. Recently, back to you, a farmer in Alser County said to me, "I'm feeling hopeful. I have to thank you and NIFOC Network for that. I'm meeting BIPOC and LGBT growers out here. I have been isolated from my peeps for so long in following this farm dream." Words like "Betsy" share that, the words that Betsy share with me shows why NIFOC is necessary in New York. Farmland is vanishing across New York. Y landowners currently control ninety-eight percent of the farm. In the years that I have worked in land access in New York, I have heard things like white Asians farmers saying things to me directly. "I will die in my tractor before working with you to find solutions to let BIPOC farmers to be here." The twenty-one-twenty-two state budget in New York reached record levels for funding agriculture. This record funding secure work for almost exclusive Y-led institutions and organizations that engage with us, Black, Indigenous, and other POC communities with the purpose of consuming our knowledge with our reciprocity. These organizations have historically used our labor, our stories, our image to build a social capital that comes from being seen to being engaged with our needs. In NIFOC, hundred percent of our work is for us, by us. During the last three months, we have been mapping the relationship and network between the ecosystem of farmers, landlords, and change markers in the network. Our elder resource shows that forty-one percent of the members are here in New York. Forty-five percent of them are actively seeking for land for human habitat and natural resource management. On top of the four hundred acres, as for Black Farmers United, I will wrap up here.
Thank you, sorry.
We are asking for thousand and more acres in the five regions of New York. This is fifteen hundred acres for rural farming and about twelve acres for urban farms in cities like Buffalo, Troy, and Newark. As I say, our work is for our people. We hope that hundred percent- We uh, hope that hundred percent driving models is the standard when it comes to racial justice and equity for land access and food sovereignty in New York. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Prasad.
Yeah, quick question because I, I'm hearing that a number of numbers thrown around about how many farmers there are. And you just mentioned four hundred and forty-nine farmers. Can you tell me the breakdown of how did you get to the four hundred and forty-nine farmers?
Uh, yeah, so our network uh, opened in two thousand and seventy. Since two thousand and seventy, BIPOC farmers and land steward has been um, applying to be a part of the network. So from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand to today, we have four hundred and forty-nine. In the last two years, we have grown twice as much and twice as fast in our members. Every day, we add members.
And these are all BIPOC farmers?
Yeah, it is a BIPOC space.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, any other senators have questions? All right, um, then I'm going to turn it over to our last panel, which is Dean Koynagi uh, from Cornell Farm Operations and Nina Salley uh, from Cornell Farms Operations Program and Veteran Outreach.
I'll start. Thank you for creating this opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Dean Koynagi. My wife and I have been farming for eleven years in the town of former US Marine of Japanese-American descent, served from nineteen eighty-seven to ninety-one. And I worked part-time as a veteran program associate for the Cornell Small Farms Program. Including in our written testimony, we've included the farmhouse's history, our partnerships and some of the accomplishments through the Department of Agriculture Markets, Veterans and Agriculture, continued funding and encouragement. Most veteran, former veteran advocates will eagerly tell you um, that veterans are uniquely suited for farming. Because one, because of course, we're familiar with working physically demanding jobs for long hours, during climate weather and under adverse change, challenging conditions. Which does sound a lot like farming, but it can be easy to stereotype what a veteran looks like and where they come from. The reality is, our veteran population is becoming as diverse as the rest of our nation. Military veterans may have enlisted from other nations, served in the different branches, have been trained in very different military occupational specialties. And there are far more women veterans leaving the services today than ever before. And that veteran may have served for just a few years or span of several decades. But each of these individuals has left a clearly structured, very team-oriented, supportive community with a strong mission and purpose and a lifestyle where they may not have even cooked for themselves in a few years. Some may be facing physical disabilities or have suffered a traumatic brain injury. They may carry hidden emotional wounds from deploying overseas or have experienced sexual military trauma. From our work with the VA, we know that veterans suffer a disproportionate rate of food insecurity and minority veterans at an even higher rate. So not surprising, enabling pathways into agriculture for veterans, either for self-sufficiency or commercial production, requires a variety of approaches. Ways of connecting with some of that lost camaraderie and reigniting that sense of service within our communities and to our nation. An effective learning and transformative veteran training often includes positive, breaking bread with our fellow veterans and letting them discuss their own transition issues while eating something that they helped grow or through specific hands-on, in-person workshops. For example, we helped support four workshops last year. Throughout the growing season at Ryzen Root Farm and coordinating with Heroic Food and Orange County CCE Gleaning Team, those veterans got to work and learn side by side with Karen Washington and the Ryzen Roots team. And they were particularly motivated by knowing that those crops that they helped plant and care for were destined for local food banks. I believe it is this sense of service that makes many of us well-suited to agriculture. To further illustrate this, I'd like to introduce my colleague, Nina Salley, to speak about her own transition from soldier to farmer.
Good afternoon. I'm Major Retired Nina Salley, Medical Service Corps, United States Army. Although I live in a farm in Lock, New York, which is in the Finger Lakes, I'm currently in New York City, where I've been for the past month to help start up and operate a COVID vaccination clinic in a place called Spring Creek Towers in Brooklyn with the goal of ensuring the fair and equitable distribution of the vaccine. My husband Jeffrey is a Marine and a soldier, also retired, and graciously holding down the farm while I'm here in the city. Today, I'd like to speak to you briefly and describe how farming has changed our lives. My husband and I moved to central New York after spending the majority of our adult lives among a tight network of friends and comrades. We were simply searching for that place that we might reside and call home for that final time. I don't have time to describe to you what a career in the military was like, but I can tell you that when I retired, I felt as if I had lost my identity and my sense of purpose. This struggle still haunts me today, but farming has helped me to change that. The Farm Ops Project provided us opportunities to explore agriculture and farming as a way to regain our sense of purpose and to connect to a community. In two thousand and fifteen, my husband and I received an invitation to a week-long event called Armed to Farm. And it was sponsored by Cornell Small Farms. I have to tell you that if that same email invitation had come to us advertising the same opportunity, but was not specific to veterans, I'm not sure that we would have accepted it. It was the idea of beginning this exploration with a group of our peers that caused us to take that initial step to learn more about farming opportunities. Now, at that time, I was only gardening for therapeutic reasons. Something I had begun to do at the request of my husband and my surgeon after two spine surgeries due to injuries that I had incurred during my time in the military. In five years with the support of Cornell Small Farms and their Farm Ops Project, we've grown from gardeners to farmers. In those five years, we've learned about soil health, crop rotation. We've learned to drive and maintain a tractor. We've learned to grow vegetables that we've never eaten before. And now we eat healthier than we did when we were in service. Farming activities have replaced our early morning military physical training activities. And farm work, I can tell you, is just as rigorous. Since farming, my husband has been able to manage his blood pressure without medication. I no longer take cholesterol medicine. My physician says it's probably due to my new diet composed mainly of fruits and vegetables. We've learned how to sell our produce at three farmers markets and on a farm stand. And these activities have been critical to our opportunity to become part of a community. And this community now seeks us out for our fresh produce and gardening advice. Through the Farm Ops Project, we've been able to share our experiences with other veterans. And we tell them, you joined the military to serve your country. But you can become a farmer to serve your community. And that prospect is what Cornell Small Farms and the Farm Ops Project has provided my family. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, Senator Prasad.
I just wanted to thank them both for their service. And um, I will come by. Spring Creek Towers is in my district. I didn't know you were there. I've been there and I will come by. Personally, thank you. So that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, I, I don't work every day, but I will be there this Thursday, Friday, and I'm always there all day on Sundays.
I'll definitely be there on Sunday. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Um, that was our last panelist. So um, thank you both. And Senator Hinchey and Senator Prasad, I'd turn it over to the two of you to uh, give some closing remarks.
Sure. I will just say, I know that we are uh, at the end of our time here, I just want to thank everyone so much for, for being here and for Nina and Dean. Thank you for your service and, and for joining us. I think uh, Nina, your comments about farming, serving the community uh, is infinitely true. Uh, this is something that is so important, supporting our agriculture community, uh, community uh, and growing it appropriately is so important. And so I thank everyone so much for their testimony today, for taking the time out of their days uh, to tell their personal stories uh, and for sharing with us and joining with us and how we can make agriculture a more inclusive and more diverse and a uh, even a stronger industry than it is today uh, so that we, we can have a long-term food security uh, here in our state. We will definitely be taking all the things that we heard today back. As Senator Prasad said, we've already been messaging about a number of things that have been discussed here today. Uh, we've all taken notes and have our teams on listening as well. So uh, this is just the beginning of a conversation. Many of us have had the, had these conversations to start, but as a, as a conference, this is just the beginning of our conversations on how we can uh, really move agriculture forward uh, in the way that it should be and the way that it needs to be. So uh, thank you all. And Senator Prasad, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much, Senator Hinchey, for bringing us together for this very important topic. I just want to really thank everyone who, who testified and gave us, you know, a lot of information. You've given us a lot of work to do. And we are committed to doing the work that you, you've charged us with doing. Uh, so again, thank you all. I want to just thank um, Lonnie and Tamara for being on here and for being our, you know, our guides and, and the things that we do, particularly for me in the Social Services um, Committee. And Dennis Weekly, my Director for Social Services, who's on there and I know him and Leah, like, you know, back and forth getting everything done. And I want to thank um, my ranker on the Social Services Committee, Senator Wyke, for being on here today. I really appreciate her taking the time to be on here. Her and I were in a meeting at eight o'clock this morning and now we're ending the day, you know, in the office and another meeting. So I appreciate that. And you know, uh, Senator Hinchey, I know we've said it to all of our colleagues and they've been on here. Senator Comrie, Senator Barello, Senator May, Senator Bailey, Senator Biagio, Biagi and Senator Ramos. I really appreciate everyone joining us. And Senator Hinchey, more than ever, I appreciate you taking the lead and having us convene here today. So again, thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much. And I would be remiss if I did not mention our ranker on the Agriculture Committee as well, Senator Barello, who has been with us uh, for the duration of this conference and uh, of this hearing and, and cares deeply about the issues as well. So thank you very much, Senator Prasad. It's an honor to, to uh, share this with you today. We have our work cut out for us.
Yes, we do. Well, we're up to it.
Yes.
Great. Thank you all.
Have a great day, everyone.